Welcome, everyone. It is now seven oh... Hello. It is now 7:01 PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the Regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, June 9th, 2025. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Gents.
Here.
And Mr. Rising.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Jane, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, July 7th. We have several board salutes tonight. We'll start with Mr. Carubus.
Indian Prairie School District receives the 2025 NSPRA Golden Achievement Award. The board salutes the district for earning a 2025 Golden Achievement Award from the National Association Public Relations for their referendum campaign, Safer, Stronger 204. The award recognizes outstanding strategic work in all aspects of school public relations, communication, marketing, and engagement. We appreciate the collaboration between the communications, community relation, and business departments in educating our community and informing taxpayers of the bond referendum details which contributed to successful passing the referendum, thereby ensuring critical infrastructure upgrades and enhanced safety and security throughout the district. Congratulations to all involved in earning this prestigious recognition.
Okay, we're going to go to Ms. Jane.
Matia Valley graduate wins National Writing Award. The board salutes Matia Valley graduate Ali Shuminas for winning first place in opinion writing in the National Federation Press Women's High School Media Contest. Ali's article, published on Matia Media last May, looked at the struggles transgender students face in school, including bullying, depression, and the use of names and pronouns. After winning the state contest in February, Ali's article moved on to the national level where it was named Best in the Country. Congratulations, Ali.
Ms. Demming.
College-sponsored National Merit Scholarship winners. The board salutes District 204 students who were recently awarded 2025 National Merit Scholarships financed by U.S. colleges and universities. Scholarship recipients include Matia Valley seniors Joanna Shu, Neil Mohan, Monisha Godu-Guchinta, as well as Niqua Valley seniors Zachar Druce Hoffman, Farsha Nair, and Aditya Rakshit. Each sponsoring college selected its scholarship winners from among the finalists in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program who plan to attend that institution. These scholarships provide between 500 and 2,000 annually for up to four years of undergraduate study. We congratulate all our National Merit Scholarship winners.
Mr. Rising.
2025 National SAM Labs Design Challenge. The board salutes students and teachers who were recognized in the 2025 National SAM Labs Design Challenge for their creativity and innovation. In the junior category, Christine Bacchio's 4th grade students at Stuck Elementary created Superseed Planter, and Katherine Spiking's 3rd grade graders at Peterson Elementary created third, earned a 3rd place for their project Save the Ducks. Dawn Evans' 4th graders at Springbrook Elementary took 2nd place with their automatic plant watering system. In the senior category, Janine Girdish's 5th grade students at Frye Elementary earned 1st place for their automatic bird feeder, 2nd place for Project Rain, and 3rd place for Save the Ocean. Congratulations on these remarkable achievements.
Ms. Gents.
2025 Microsoft Office Specialist U.S. National Championship. The board salutes Niqua Valley senior Valeria Ramirez for placing 2nd in Illinois in the Microsoft 365 Apps Excel Exam during the fall qualifier of the 2025 Microsoft Office Specialist U.S. National Championship. Valeria's hard work and skill, along with the support of her teachers, led to this amazing achievement. Congratulations, Valeria, on this stellar achievement.
So I want to congratulate, let's join everyone to congratulate on these outstanding achievements across the district, so thank you for all these results. It is now time for public comment, and 60 minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to 3 minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have three speakers tonight. The first speaker is Sue Ellen Gurchman. Welcome.
Sit down. Thank you. Superintendent Tally and residents, my name is Sue Ellen Gurchman. I taught project aeroscience at Crone Middle School for 20 years. I have been retired for the past 3 years, during which time I have run a science club at Crone. Students complete individual research projects so they can compete at the Illinois Junior Academy of Sciences Regional and State Science Fairs. When I was hired to teach at Crone, science projects were part of the PA Science Program at all 3 levels, and also for 8th grade students. The last year that science projects were part of the middle school curriculum, 150 Crone students competed at the district fair, 45 of them went on to a regional fair, and of those 45, over 30 went on to the state fair, most receiving the Top Gold Award and several received special awards as well. When the new science curriculum was adopted, I continued to have my 8th grade students complete science research projects as part of their enrichment for PA Science. Over 20 years of teaching, I found that the science research project had more impact on my students than any other parts of the curriculum. Letters from former students also support this. To begin with, the science project allows for student choice. Research has shown that when a student has choice over what they study, it increases their motivation, the quality of their work, and their work completion. Completing a science inquiry project also supports NGSS. The Next Generation Science Standards has 3 dimensions, one of them being science and engineering practices. The science project involves all of the practices. Students begin by asking questions or defining problems. They complete background research to better understand the basic science involved in their project. Next, they plan and carry out investigations. They analyze and interpret data. They write a conclusion based on their evidence. They communicate their findings by writing a research paper and preparing a presentation to use when they present to the judges at the fair. In conclusion, I would like to encourage the district to support students interested in doing science research projects by having all 7 middle schools and the 3 high schools join IJAS for next school year. The cost is only $100 per school. For the regional fair, the cost is $20 per project. I currently have 35 students signed up to complete a project next year. The students attend all 3 high schools, Crone, Gregory, and Skullin Middle Schools. It would be great if the district would support these students. Each school would need a teacher sponsor willing to check projects for compliance with IJS safety. I am happy to work with any teacher interested in learning more about supporting our students. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anveta Tyree. Anveta.
I hope you all are having a good evening. I'm going to be a senior at Niqua in the fall, and reflecting on the past 17 years of my life, I realized that my entire schooling journey was shaped substantially by science fairs. Being able to look into what intrigues me, develop valuable research and presentation skills, and compete for awards is genuinely one of the best experiences that can be had for STEM passionate students. The state science fair this year handed out over $60,000 in scholarships and awards, and the international fair handed out over $9 million. At this point in time, science fairs and research experience are more valuable to colleges and employers than ever, and they're more desired by students than ever as well. The reason I am here today is to advocate for official, district-wide support for students to participate in the Illinois Junior Academy of Science Fairs. This goal is not only extremely beneficial if achieved, but itself extremely achievable. Wabonzi and Crone already have science fair clubs, and they've been doing extremely well at regionals and state. Other school districts with similar resources to ours have very high-achieving programs, such as Stevenson High School making up almost 5% of the state fair alone. Many 204 students without official clubs at their schools have also been finding other ways to participate, such as through my control group club, where I mentor and sponsor students to participate in these fairs. However, without official institutional support for these clubs, many do not know of these opportunities. And more importantly, we're missing out on the incredible knowledge and connections that our district's world-class teachers have to offer, some of whom have gotten me to where I am today. In the first year that all students in Illinois were eligible to qualify for the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, I represented our entire region of the state. And to pin it all off, 22% of the adult board and 50% of the executive student board that run the whole organization of IJAS are from District 204. Without the support of Mrs. Gurchman and Mrs. Hawkins, incredible retired teachers from our district, none of this would have happened. We have the resources, student and teacher brilliance, and historical expertise needed to not only participate in these fairs, but to thrive in them. The problem here is accessibility. Without official support, no one knows of the opportunity. That is why the district should firmly establish extracurricular science clubs for its schools. They're far from expensive, yet provide thousands of dollars in scholarships. They didn't hook up valuable staff time without compensation, yet our students would greatly benefit from them. And for any extra support along the way, I would love to meet with and help any club, student, teacher, or school. When we have ample interest, expertise, and resources to thrive as a school district, it just makes sense to take some time and expand those successes to everyone, accessibly and equitably. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Jill Goson.
Hi, I'm Jill Goson. This is Bobby Murphy. We're the food service directors in Indian Prairie, and we, on behalf of Organic Life, we want to take this opportunity to express our heartfelt gratitude for being a part of such an incredible district.
Serving District 204 has been an absolute privilege, and we are deeply thankful to be among the community with the superintendent, school board, and parents who are so deeply invested in the well-being and success of our children. This year, we achieved a remarkable milestone by serving more meals than we ever did before. On behalf of the entire Organic Life team, we want to say thank you for your trust and support in us.
And we want to wish you a very, very nice summer.
Summer.
Thank you very much.
So we are here just to say thank you for everything and your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Silabansy.
Hmm?
I have Ms. Silabansy's presentation at the school.
No, it isn't.
Okay, okay. All right, we now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report.
Ms. Donahue, members of the board and the Indian Prairie community, I must start my comments with sad news. Ms. Bonnie Budson, Principal Secretary at Hill Middle School, passed away on Wednesday, May 28th. She had worked for Indian Prairie for 6 years. Before going to Hill Middle School, she worked at Gregory. May her family know that she was a valued member of our Indian Prairie School District community and will be missed, and I ask that they take a moment of silence in honor of Thank you. On Memorial Sunday, we graduated more than 2,100 students at our 3 high schools during their commencement ceremonies. From start to finish, each event was well orchestrated and provided each school the opportunity to celebrate its graduates. There are a lot of hours in planning these events, and a lot happens behind the scenes leading to the actual graduation. I applaud the planners at the 3 high schools. Ms. Montrine Johnson at Wabonzi, Mr. Rodney Jones at Matia, and Mr. Michael O'Toole at Niqua. Well done to all of you for a great job. We wish all of our graduates much success in their future. The end of the school year is always bittersweet, as we say goodbye to our students and staff wishing them a wonderful summer. We are very proud of what we've been able to accomplish this school year with our schools working in collaboration with parent groups to support our students. A lot has happened this school year, from the passage of our bond referendum, to Mr. Jason Stip being named Illinois PTA Principal of the Year, to our district being ranked by niche as one of the top school districts in the nation. We have accomplished great things. We now start working for the 2526 school year. August 19th will be here very soon. And before I turn the meeting to Ms. Donahue, I would like to ask that the Board of Ed approve the appointment of Mr. James D. Ferguson as Director of Student Services effective July 1. Mr. Ferguson will be replacing Dr. Kim Wazinski, who's moving to a different district. Mr. Ferguson is coming to us from the Maywood Melrose Park Broadview School District, 89, where he's currently Assistant Director of Student Services. Mr. Ferguson has had other positions in his career, to include being a principal, director of student services, and was a special education teacher, team leader here at Niqua. So yes, you can go home again. He is very excited about returning to Indian Prairie, and he's here in our audience tonight. I will now turn the meeting back over to Ms. Donahue.
So I need a motion to approve James Ferguson as Director for Student Services as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve James Ferguson as Director of Student Services as presented.
Is that it? Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. Congratulations. Welcome back home.
Thank you so much for empowering me to be able to work in District 204 again. A lot of my career, I have reflected on what I've learned as an educator starting my career in 204, and I'm glad to be able to bring back my knowledge and education to support the families and students here in 204. I have with me, joining me, my beautiful wife, Cara, as well as my 2 children, Summer and Skylar.
Oh.
So cute.
Congratulations. Okay, next we move to our consent agenda item. I need a motion for the approval of Consent Agenda Items E through S.
I move that the Board approve Consent Agenda Items E through S as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
And Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Okay, I now need a motion and a second to approve the substitute teacher compensation for 2025-2026 as presented.
I move to approve the substitute teacher compensation for 2025-2026.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Myself and Ms. Fosdick will be abstaining because we both substitute sometimes in the district, so... Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Gents.
Yes.
The motion passes. I need a motion and a second to approve the Superintendent Search Services Agreement with Hazard, Young, and Atiya and Associates, HYA, as presented.
I move that the Board approve the Superintendent Search Services Agreement with Hazard, Young, Atiya, and Associates, HYA, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? There'll be an announcement put out tomorrow from myself discussing the next steps, and we went through a thorough process in looking at different search firms and put out an RFP, and we are very pleased to have HYA supporting our board on this. So, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
The motion passes. We will now have a presentation regarding the Master Facility Plan update.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, we are very excited. We do believe this is a pivotal presentation or an important presentation in the history of the district, as we update you on our Master Facility Plan and the work we have highlighted here for the next several years, specifically at Wabonzi, Niqua, and the Burkett campuses. Tonight's presentation is consistent with Board Policy 4.150 and 4.160, and covers Strategic Plan Priorities Number 1, 2, 3, and 4. So tonight's agenda, we'll start with a summary of the Master Facility Plan and current program. We're going to cover an update of the Wabonzi Valley Construction Program and Timeline. We'll cover the Niqua Valley Construction Program and Timeline, the Burkett Construction Program and Timeline, as well as some really exciting new programming we're proposing for the Burkett Center. And then we will be available to discuss the next steps and any questions. I'm excited, because I usually present by myself, so I'm excited that I brought so many people tonight, we can't all fit at the table at the same time. So, we're going to be, there's going to be a few shift changes tonight. We do think that'll be kind of a natural break as we cover some of these to hopefully give the board and give everybody a little breather as we go through it. But presenting on Wabonzi Valley this evening will be Amy Tyberry. I believe this is the first time Amy's been in front of our board, but she's been a key member with White &amp; Company as we've done this work over the last 6-plus months, and have transitioned from our Master Facility Plan to really figuring out how we're going to get all the work done. Also with us tonight is PTA Principal of the Year Jason Stip from Wabonzi. Cheering section. He's a little distracted tonight because the baseball team's in a super sectional game tonight, but I think he'll be able to stay on.
Get any texts or anything throughout.
And then covering Niqua Valley tonight will be Steve Shear, architect from White &amp; Company, who's been working closely on that project, and we'll have Dave Perry, Assistant Principal at Niqua Valley, presenting with him. To talk about Burkett this evening, we'll have Amy, along with Dr. Nicole Howard and Brian Jovanini from our district office, and then myself, Amy, and Dr. Howard will be available for any questions. We did want to bring the whole team tonight because we thought it was important that the board and our community hear from representatives of all the stakeholders that have involved in this work, because we have worked closely through the past several months, a team not just of our architects and district leaders, but also our building leaders as well have been, have involved in all this work. But I just want to start really quickly, kind of anchoring us in our Master Facility Plan and maybe some of the work we've already discussed with the board. Here this evening shows really our highest priorities that were identified in the Master Facility Plan. So this comes directly from that document, which the board adopted in December of 2023. And this slide, we really used throughout the informational campaign during our referendum to really, again, try and share with our community some of the key findings that were present across most facilities in the district as we did that Master Facility Plan. So I'll just highlight this evening that tonight, we're really checking a lot of the key boxes in this plan. We will touch briefly on safety and security, as well as infrastructure at several of our key buildings. We'll start, or really address the lack of parity we have specifically across our high school buildings this evening. And then we're really, really working at that operational inefficiency topic as well. So again, as we think about what bringing the freshmen back to the main campus at Niqua enables with some efficiencies and that re-energizing of the Burkett Center, again, really believe we're starting to check off some of the major initiatives that were identified in the Master Facility Plan. With that said, I don't want people to think that we've been, you know, that we haven't done anything leading up to tonight. We've been very busy, and just wanted to show that this summarizes some of the high-priority work we've done since 2022. Again, we started even before we did the Master Facility Plan. We knew we were coming in with some significant deferred needs, and so we initiated what we called our 50-for-50 capital program. So again, we did about $50 million worth of capital reinvestment over the past 3 and 1/2 years, and we've accomplished a lot. So tonight really kind of closes the chapter on the 50-for-50 program, if you will, and really starts a new, exciting chapter in the capital program in our district. But again, shown here, you know, with the local dollars that came through that program, we were able to really improve safety and security, security cameras at all buildings. We began our exterior door replacement program, really took a hard look at paving and hardscape throughout the district, and making improvements at 19 facilities. Started a comprehensive flooring replacement program at our elementary schools, which will continue with these bond funds. Learning environments, no more important learning environment than our playgrounds, and we've replaced 14 playgrounds at our elementary schools, as well as fax classrooms and other classrooms throughout our district as well. And again, even though we, even though tonight will be the real focus of the work for Wabonzi, but we have made some incremental improvements at some of our high-need buildings as well. And again, just wanted to summarize what's in progress as of, really, as our students and teachers were moving out, our construction crews were moving in over the last week. Happy to report we're on schedule already for Week 1 of the summer. But again, a busy amount of summer work that's already started, and again, is really, was an initiative for us to get a lot of this high-priority work started this summer in relatively short timeframe since the successful referendum in November. So this summer's work does include working at 11 elementary schools to install secure vestibules, as well as do a full exterior door replacement at those buildings. Again, continuing that significant infrastructure work, improving the learning environments, and then really the work we're going to focus on this evening, which is to begin the comprehensive improvements for Wabonzi, Burkett, and Niqua. Just want to show here, this is the budget for the total program that we're starting this summer. this summer. During the referendum, we focused on the $420 million of referendum funds that was on the ballot. The total project budget for all the nine major projects we're looking to accomplish is higher than that, it's $466 million. Just want to cover, there are other sources of revenue, capital sources of revenue that we're applying against these projects, and the main source is really going to be investment earnings and premiums coming from the capital projects fund. So again, it is a little early in the projects, but those revenues are on budget to meet that target and to cover that delta, if you will, from the bond funds. And then we do have, as we've covered during some of our budget presentations here in February and May, we do have local capital dollars, and we do have some excess fund balance, which we're holding back as contingency. So we are, you know, we anticipate, and our expectation is that we stay on budget, but we do have a contingency plan just in case. I will point out, these budgets now include escalation, so we are, you know, we have an eight-year plan, we are budgeting a conservative number for future costs related to inflation. Obviously, the environment we've been in the last couple months with uncertainty around tariffs or around interest rate policy or trade policies, you know, because, you know, makes that a little challenging, but we do believe we're in a good place as we project out cost escalations going forward. And then I'll just, you know, again, continue to highlight that as of today, we are on time and on budget with delivering these nine programs, and we continue to aggressively manage the costs associated with them. We will start talking timeline a little bit tonight, specifically with Wobonzie specifically, there is some opportunities to potentially save costs if we can accelerate that timeline. So what we're presenting tonight is a conservative timeline, but we are continuing to work with our team of architects and engineers to really identify how we can get work done quicker, how we can get it done more efficiently, and ultimately, how we can do it in a way that saves money and minimizes the impact to the school building. Already mentioned, again, the good work underway this summer in the safety and security areas. I just wanted to highlight this for kind of a three-year roadmap of how we're going to address the safety and security needs of our buildings. So you'll see here, broken out by level, a three-year plan for doing those secure vestibule and other security improvement work. So this summer, our focus is on 11 of our elementary schools. Next summer, we have another 11 or 12 facilities planned for that work as well, and we will, we've already begun some of that planning work, and we'll continue to do so. And then the summer of '27, we'll come back and complete that work. So all schools will have the benefit of that full safety and security upgrade by the start of the '27, '28 school year, and that is consistent with the commitment we made during the referendum campaign. Just wanted to put this up there, again, we've used that term "secure vestibule" a lot and talked about some of the safety and security needs or improvements, but I just wanted to show that this is, maybe puts a little bit more, you know, more specifics to what that secure vestibule looks like and what the improvement is. And so up top, the top graphic is sort of our existing floor plan for an elementary school, and then the second graphic is the improvements that are going to come with that secure vestibule work. So, you know, I'll first highlight that we now would have, we now have a double set, after the improvement, a double set of doors that are able to be locked and are controlled through an electronic access control. So that allows a building secretary or a main office staff person to both have a door locked at arrival to a building, but then, once that person is admitted to the building, they're still only able to access that secure vestibule area before they receive their full clearance to access other parts of the building. A couple additional features then, and it's highlighted kind of by that number two, is kind of an increased area for drop-off and display. So this is how we allow the large number of drop-offs we have each day, lunches, forgotten homework, handouts, books, musical instruments at the middle and high school level. How we allow that to be handled, again, without even needing to provide additional access to our main office or our building. Additionally, there's an additional door that allows for only a path to the main office. So if you have somebody, for example, who's coming to a meeting in the main office, for example, we would only grant access to the main office. That person would still be limited before, to not have access to the remaining parts of the school building. So again, further, providing further additional security measures. And then I'll just point out, you know, one of the things that, again, I think maybe we don't think about as much, is a little counterintuitive, but by increasing visibility, we also, that also increases safety and security. And so by relocating our office staff, and this is what's shown by sort of that number five bullet, is by relocating the reception and administrative workstations, by ensuring there's two workstations so that somebody's kind of always there if somebody has to step away, we now increase our ability to monitor that whole front area of the building. And so again, maybe something that, in its face, looks like a small improvement, but it does go a long way to improving the overall safety and security of the campus. I'll just, one final thing, by completing that work, we're also allowing for a full refresh of that main office, so new waiting room furniture, new fixtures, new upholstery. Again, just trying to create a more welcoming environment when our guests enter the building as well. So finally, before I turn it over to the teams here to talk about the three individual projects, I just want to emphasize that we approach this work really with a lens of providing equity across all our campuses. And so you are going to hear maybe some different challenges we face at different buildings, some different opportunities, maybe we accomplish things a little differently, or our building leadership, you know, has a specific way of articulating something, but I want to ensure the team tonight and the community that equity has been the number-one priority for us as we went through this work. So again, just trying to highlight what all three of our high schools gain as part of this capital program, safety and security enhancements, infrastructure improvements where needed, that increase of operational efficiency, and the district-wide programming that's going to be available through the Burkett Center, and then, you know, the ever-important turf field, or, which, again, really isn't, really isn't just about one or two sports seasons, but really is about making those playing surfaces available 365 days a year for a variety of programs, not just our athletics, but also our physical education classrooms, our bands, and again, other student activities. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the team to talk specifically about Wobonzie Valley.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. So with Wobonzie Valley and actually all the programs that we're going to talk about tonight, we have just wrapped up our conceptual planning and programming stage. So some of the images that you're going to see tonight are still in black and white, just conceptual, three-dimensional imagery. As we start getting further in, like when we start talking about the auditorium, you'll see more elaborate renderings, as we call them, because we are further along in the process. So just note that it's just a moment in time at this point, and the design process is ever-evolving and changing, and I'd like to go forward and talk a little bit about some of the key issues specifically here at Wobonzie, which have been highlighted not only in the master planning process, but continue to stay true to date. We've met with a lot of the stakeholders, not only at the district administration level, but also at the school level, to assure that what's happening today in their buildings, and then also for the future of the proposed plan. So tonight, you're going to see how a lot of these issues are going to translate into the final designs of the Wobonzie plan. So the top three are safety and security above all. At Wobonzie, too, circulation and efficiency of the building itself has always been a challenge, so by creating clear flows and visibility throughout the building can not only improve that safety and security measure, but also wayfinding for anyone going through the building. And then daylight. For those of you who have walked through Wobonzie Valley, a lot of the classroom spaces are actually internally or classroom spaces that really, you don't know what time of day it is outside, so we're going to show you some measures of how we can get daylight deeper into the spaces, just from a few simple design elements. One of the first processes that we went through was to start by confirming the number of teaching stations within the building and looking at the utilization of the classroom spaces. So Wobonzie is actually gaining an additional classroom space as part of this renovation process, and also increasing the utilization of those teaching stations, which will benefit the entire school. The site plan that you see on the screen behind you includes, some of the major improvements include what we're calling a ring road, and that's just a roadway connecting the north and south parking lots, which will help with vehicular circulation immensely, and I know that sounds like a small feat, but it's going to be huge for getting traffic flow during those big game nights or special events that are happening through the building. The other major improvement on the site that you're going to see is the stadium improvements and the new turf field, which are going to include modifications to the bleachers, flopping the home and visitor bleacher side so that home's on the correct side, as well as a new concessions building, lighting, and with the turf field, not only are you getting a turf field, but we are also sizing it appropriately to fit the soccer on there. So you'll have a soccer within the stadium itself. So major improvements that are much needed for Wobonzie. The plan behind you is, includes a colored diagram, which is color-coded by department. So on the, we're not, the main entrance, which is at the bottom of the page, identified by a red triangular, is the existing main entrance, which would stay to date. We first look at the existing plans by, and color-coded by department, to make sure that we account for every space that is currently in the building before we start the next steps for proposing the plan. So that occurs on the second floor, as well as the third floor of Wobonzie. One thing that we unraveled rather quickly in our investigation was, on the first floor, there are a series of seven different level changes that range anywhere from a couple feet to about three feet a difference. So in order to navigate around the building on the first floor alone, there's a series of ramps and stairs, and then sometimes it's not a direct pathway to get to one side of the building versus the other. So as an architect, that's actually a nice opportunity to create different design opportunities for those transitions in a meaningful way. We also took a look at the existing columns locations, and this building has been added on over, with three different building additions since 1975, and our focus is the center of the building that's hatched with a series of dots to improve visibility, as well as wayfinding through the building. We're going to clean that up a little bit as part of our proposed plans, and this way, as you walk through the building, not only will you know where you're going for wayfinding, but it's also going to be a nice supervision aspect from a safety standpoint, because you'll be able to see what's happening at the other side of the building as well. As part of that circulation exercise, the left side of the images, top and bottom, are the existing circulation flows, primary and secondary, as well as shortcuts that are being created throughout Wobonzie as it exists today. When we look at the proposed planning diagrams that we'll go through momentarily, we're trying to make it efficient where the primary flows are really through the heart of the building and that learning common, so a lot of circulation is going to be taking place through a grand staircase that happens in the middle of the building that you can easily get up and then distribute out throughout the floor levels rather quickly, rather than making your way through the building in what is now a little bit of a maze. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason.
Thank you, Amy. I want to also thank parents and students and alumni, parent-alumnys here, for coming on a Monday night. So thank you for showing support of our school board and our community schools with this referendum and this work that many of them have lived through, walked through, and are excited about. So I appreciate their support here tonight, and I also appreciate White and Amy's cooperation and connection with us, the building leaders, through this process, the emails and the notes and everything. We've thrown a lot of little details out, and they've been open and processed everything, and it's just, it has been a very, very good process, so thank you. You can see the slide here, I'm just going to talk a little bit about what Amy is trying to address, what White was trying to address in the first couple points with circulation and visibility, natural light and safety. So safety, you know, with the main entrance there, the vestibule will be there, you'll see the main office now is right when you walk in. If you are, if you're familiar with our school, as I know you are, you can walk through the middle of the atrium before you even get to the main office. The nurse's office is going to be right there off the front, too, so we'll be able to have parents go right to the nurse's office instead of walk all the way to the back of the school and go through the student cafeteria to try to drop off medication. So we've just really tried to bring some of those things up. You can see the hallways are clean shots all the way through the atrium to where now, if you're in the back of the hallway by the visual arts, and you'll see it when I click through the next slide, too, you can now see the clear lines, which helps, and that's also going to bring natural light, because as you're going to see pictures from the atrium and that commons area now, you're going to get natural light to kind of push back into the space. They have moved the kitchen back, so it's not blocking when you currently walk in the building. So these were some of the things that this definitely, this team addressed. Here is an example of our special education office. We highlighted this one, all the offices are getting grouped together, so to maximize classroom space. Right now, a lot of our teachers have their own rooms, so now they'll be coming to collaborate more in department offices, where we'll be able to service kids through reassessment and academic resource, but this is a special ed office, which is at the front of the school. Our AIM classrooms are going to get much-needed work in the front of the school, and they're going to have supports for those students that are on level with the other schools, which is very, very important. You can see that also, the, when they talk about bringing everything together and the circulation efficiency, all the specialists are right there within that office area now, as opposed to being all the way down the hallway. The nurse's office is near there, too. So again, just the detail of currently, our special ed is scattered throughout the entire building, and now it's more centralized, and that is, it kind of speaks to what they try to do with many of the different department offices as well. This is going to be the dining common space, real excited for this. Again, you're going to be able to see the entire space, as opposed to how we currently have it leveled off, and there's a wall where we have our upperclassmen on one side and lowerclassmen inside the bowl into that cafeteria, so now it's going to be completely open. There's a competition gym off to the side there, and all that now will be, when you walk in the door, you'll see that gathering staircase, which you can see at the bottom. That will kind of block a little bit of the cafeteria from your eye as you're walking in, but for the most part, you'll be able, that whole area will now be open, which will be easier to supervise, easier for us to have some visibility on what's going on, and just create a lunch venue for our students that I think is something they're going to be very excited about, as compared to kind of how they currently access our cafeteria. This goes over now our physical education space, which is also being touched through this process. We are finally going to be able to move our weight room down to the first floor. That has been a very challenge for us from the start, and as weights get dropped and deadlifts and all that, and it's just, it's not smart. If anyone's building a school, don't put a weight room on the second floor, all right? Or two third floors that don't connect, that'd be my other advice, too, but the weight room is a no-brainer. So that is coming down. You can see our PE office is now going to be combined with our male and female teachers as opposed to having two separate offices. That's another example of efficiency of the space we're using. The locker rooms, I feel we're doing some real cutting- The locker rooms, I feel we're doing some real cutting-edge stuff there. We've worked with a couple other schools that have tried some of this, but we are, we are reducing the footprint of our locker rooms to how students are currently using them. A lot of our students, for lack of better ways to describe it, it's a little bit more like elementary PE. And when I say that, not what they're doing, but how students are dressing for PE now. Most students come in athletic gear and things like that, so they're not necessarily, not all students are changing, unless they have like a presentation or a need for that. So, we're giving students lockers for like tennis shoes and maybe a tee-shirt. But then what we're doing is also creating some cubbies and stuff, in case you just wanna drop your bag and put your stuff in a secure place. And then we're having them share the shower areas with the athletic locker room, so we don't have showers in four different spaces that are not being used at different times. So, we've really, White and company has really worked extensively with myself, athletic director, the department chair PE, and we've really tried to kinda figure out like how are students using this space? And how can we design space to best support that? So, this gives an example of how we're trying to do that. And then on the second floor, I think is important, which I appreciate them working with us. As you're familiar with our school, you can walk up to the bleachers and hide behind the bleachers, and kids run around back there on basketball games, and they are gonna wall that off now. And that's actually gonna be a fitness cardio room, so that it's more secured, it's safe. I cannot believe what, you know, it's just, if you go there, you see it back there. We have a lot of open areas, and it becomes just running around, and we can't really even supervise it during large events. Same thing's gonna happen on the other side, we'll have a nice, we'll actually have a dance room. We're able to move the wrestling room over now into the current weight room. And we're gonna use that room during the school day for adaptive PE, which is a great space for them. Because of the mats and stuff, those students enjoy working on those spaces. We're gonna have the mats made for that area. So, that's gonna be something where we've really made sure that how can we use things during the school day that are also being used after school as well, and that's a nod to that. Here is the second floor, there's some of the department workrooms you see. And again, just wanna point out, you can see the clean lines. So, now if you're all the way in the back where the orange is by maybe S9 back there, you could almost see all the way into the atrium, which will help bring in some of that natural light. And just a lot cleaner lines, that if you know when you've been in our school, you get back there, you have no idea where you're at. And so, you just, you can't see anything. So, this should really open up all of that immensely for us. And then you can see the Alpha Houses, we did combine Alpha Houses, we're gonna run two Alpha Houses. We've kept the current staircase there, so that they can go up and down with each other. But we'll do more of like an A through M and N through Z stacked on each other. And that, we think, will be a great way to service our students right off of the cafeteria and kinda the main part of the building. Here's our library, we're really excited for this space. No longer is it gonna be a hallway, which we, our librarian is amazing, she's allowed us to turn that into a walkway, against her better judgment. And we did lose a little space in the library, but not really, because part of it was a hallway. So, we can't really do much with that space currently, anyway. So, now it's gonna be closed off, you see in the back there, we've created opportunities for natural light. There is some natural light there that we've never been able to use, and now we'll be able to do that. And that will look over the cafeteria, and then you see the stairway. When you walk in the building from the, I'll show you some pictures, that will be kind of, you'll walk in and you'll see that library space up there overlooking the atrium. These are the two-third floors, we were unable to connect the two-third floors, so that will still continue to be something very special to Wabansy Valley. And then it's fine, yes, it's part of it, it's just like my mom's house, there's some things that just don't work well, you know? But in our, I love our kids and our school community, and it'll, that'll, that's fine. And I really mean that, so, but it shows the two rooms being renovated on the mat, and it was just too impossible to do that, and to do that monetarily would've been a lot of money for a small amount of gain. So, here's some of the photos of our current school and the atrium. I mean, believe it or not, you're supposed to see through that atrium ceiling, which you really can't. So, just because of the plastic used at the time. And there's the two, the balconies, we're trying to really limit those so that it looks more open. So, this is if you walked into door one and you looked right now, this would be what it would, it's gonna look like. Yeah, ah, ooh. It's amazing. So, there's some past graduates out here, they're not oohing, they're yelling probably. Like, really? So, so you can see that, and then here's another one. So, this is kind of by the library, like where that American flag is, is where the library wall is, okay? And again, everything's closed off, dry-walled up, closed in, dark, just because of how it was built. And whoops, this is now, no, right, yeah, yeah, right there, yeah, okay, see, thank you. So, this is what it'll look like now, so there are those three windows is where that American flag is. That's the cafeteria, there's the staircase, there's a library up there, as I said, and then trying to bring in as much natural light as we can. Here is the option area that our juniors and seniors currently use for lunch only, because of the seating. We can only allow upperclassmen there. This would be what that space would look like now, just into the cafeteria, right from the gym. So, again, you can see how you can see all the way even to the front of the school from here. The visibility is really opened up, and it just, you can really get a sense of, you're kind of supervising kids without supervising, just because people are going to be around and more visible in spaces, so that was the intent. Here is our current cafeteria, there's our retired maintenance man of 33 years, Mr. Gunn, who just retired this year. He snuck in the photo. And this is, again, what the cafeteria will look like in that space now. You can see the different levels, that's what Amy was talking about, they leaned into that, which will really be nice in this cafeteria setting, because you'll have some people that'll be a little bit higher up. We have some spots, we have circle tables, we have longer tables, we have individual tables. And all this is important, because some kids just like to eat by themselves, get some of their stuff done, kind of put their headphones on and just kinda zone out for a little bit. Other kids like to eat with a group of four or five, some people like the longer tables. So, this will be important that we vary the tables to create an atmosphere that fits the current students, how they all use that space now. And this would be if I'm currently looking out to the front of the school, up by the library where that elevator is, it's gonna be taken out. This is that view, and that third floor's right above me. So, again, you can see just building floors on top of each other, closing in that amazing atrium and making it feel more enclosed, and now you're gonna have it way more open. So, that would be the view from that spot. And you can see, they did have to leave the third floor still up there, that's potential conversation, depending on the project. But you can see they were very mindful of getting rid of that second one with just a couple of skybridges to bring in more, as much natural light as possible. This, and then a couple photos of the auditorium that they've added, but am I talking about these, or, okay? So, this is some of the work that, the projected photos that they've started on, all the seats are out. They are currently doing the concrete masonry work for these seats. They've already knocked out the door for handicap accessibility. If you know, you come into our school, you have to come in the door and walk all the way around the auditorium, all the way to the other door to get into the handicap entrance. So, that will be now right off the front with the ticket booth, with an area knocked out, and a new sound booth, with the cheek walls there, and very excited about what this space is going to turn out to be like. And again, these are just, there's the picture of the sound booth and what it will look like from the back. So, when we see you all at Prism, you'll have a great appreciation for this amazing space. And we only lost, I think, about 30 or 40 seats, so we did a nice job of still maintaining our, we have a great auditorium, we really do, and it's an amazing space. So, we were, we're just happy for a lot of this much-needed upgrade. There's some of the construction work, as I was saying, and on that ladder there, we have a camera taking pictures every 20 minutes. So, I'll show you the time lapse when it's all, when it's all done. Alright, so, and I wanna thank you for your support for our building community. It's hard to put this much money into a school that's getting ready to turn 50 years. As a member of this community, I greatly appreciate that, because I know passing those things are never easy. So, thank you, and I appreciate your trust in us and making sure that this work gets done the right way. And again, thank you to my parents and family members that came tonight, thank you.
As Mr. Shipley had mentioned earlier, that we're gonna be reviewing kind of preliminary construction phasing and timeline to implement some of this work. It's an ever-fluid process, and we'll be working with district administration, as well as our construction CM, construction manager partners, to make sure that the timelines work with the school district. So, underway currently this summer is the auditorium project at Wabansy Valley. So, we are currently under construction, you saw a photo of that. Every day is ever-changing. Starting in the spring of '26, we're gonna look at starting the stadium project for that work. So, that would happen from spring through summer of '26. The summer of '26, we will also be starting the commons work, as well as some academic classroom wings that are highlighted in red, and most importantly, a secure vestibule. We'll be creating that secure vestibule in the front. During the '27-'28 school year, sorry, '26-'27 school year, thank you, the commons work will continue under construction, and there will be temporary cafeteria, and the commons would be closed. The summer of '27 then would be our, what we're calling Phase III work, which is gonna happen on the third floor. When the kids come back for the '27-'28 school year, then the commons work will be, cafeteria will be completed. The summer of '28, we're proposing the areas highlighted in light blue, which is some of the main office work, the, some more academic spaces and visual arts to happen. Over summer of '29, looking at the PE spaces and the, and more classrooms on the second floor. And then the final phase of summer of '20-30, to include kinda that second-level academic area, as well as the pool. Overall, as a summary, we're really only affecting one school year in this preliminary planning that's gonna affect during the school year for construction. All the other construction phases are happening during the summer timelines.
So, the, I think there are a couple positives to the work. Like, obviously, our students are gonna come back to a brand-new auditorium this October, November. Our hope is to have Prism in the, our winter holiday show in the auditorium. And then, we're already talking, beginning talking about like the cafeteria, what's that look like? Obviously, that's a huge space that our students use. So, we're talking about, some of the things that we're kicking around are, how do we bring in 2,700 students in the morning? And when our general areas where students gather in the morning, the cafeteria, the atrium, the library, are off, off the grid. So, that is one of the biggest challenges that we are beginning to talk about now, is how do we do that in a way that we can safely have students in the building and start the day when they can't really gather and hang out the first 20 minutes before school, because we just do not have that kind of space? And where can we get that kind of space to do that? And the other thing that we're really holding as a key point is just how we continue our academic support of students in our interventions. And so, like, we have students through lunch periods, and on Wednesdays, they access academic resource centers, they access testing and reassessment, all that stuff is gonna be blown up because of the library. So, how do we do that? How do we, how do we help students navigate the building and find teachers and get help during the school day so that they feel like they can still get those things done as they used to be able to do? And we're beginning to talk about that. I feel we're gonna maximize room usage, as I said, a lot of our teachers, some of them have their own room open during their like prep, and I've already told teachers, expect 100% room capacity during '26-'27, because it's, we're gonna need every room. We might be doing a fax room up on the third floor where social studies is, you know? Doing like a kind of instructional sewing class. So, we are also gonna try to maximize how we do the ring road, so that we can help get students in the building a little bit easier. These are all conversations we're having, I feel really good about them. We're gonna, one meeting tomorrow, and there'll be several more meetings. But I feel like a lot of our conversations already about '26-'27 are very doable. And I'm hoping that, one of the big things that I'll focus on is like the currents, the rising juniors, how do we, how do we make that senior year special for them? How can we possibly get that cafeteria done during their senior year? And those are things like we're kicking around, like what things can we open up so when they come back from spring break or a winter break, they're like, wow, this is, I gotta be a part of this? So, those are things we're really talking about as we do some of these construction considerations.
Laurie, maybe we should ask questions before they do a shift change?
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea. Excuse me. Alright, since you brought it up, Mr. Carubus, you can start.
Former Wabansy alumni, Mr. Carubus.
Yeah, thank, I do have some affinity for Wabansy, so, and that original Valley swagger I love. A lot of this, for me, is just really going back to the future kinda thing, because a lot of this is how I remember the school. The, you know, the bleachers were on the right side back in the day, and, you know, the weight room was on the first floor, and, you know, the cafeteria was more open. And so, it's interesting how we, in these, you know, 30, 40 years subsequent, we've kind of gone back to the future. And with our 50th anniversary coming up, I think that that dovetails well. One of the, you know, equity points mentioned was the soccer field going into the stadium. So, is that some, I don't know how we operate all the high schools. Is that something that we do at all the high schools, or planning on doing at all the high schools?
I think right, right now, at both Niqua and Wabansy, our use of that, of the field inside the stadium is very limited, because it is natural grass. So, I'm not sure, I can't speak directly what, what Niqua does, for example, but I think that the challenge with natural grass is just even hosting any event more than one or two times a week on it becomes challenging. So, I think the focus would be at all three schools, being able to offer multiple, multiple sports on that stadium field, whether that's, whether that's soccer, football, lacrosse, you know, ensuring it's available for track and field, ensuring it's available for band use. I think there's really an opportunity, I think, to expand it at all three buildings, as all three get turf, or in Matia's case, get, get a turf replacement here in '26.
What limits us is that we have our track, our field events, inside the field. So, Niqua doesn't, so that will be, that will gain some, like, we have our long jump, our, all that stuff that's inside. Most people don't put that in their stadium anymore.
Sure.
So, that, that will help gain some room. We're IHSA compliant, I think, in a perfect world, some soccer people would love, you know, large sidelines, but it's not necessary for the play.
Looking at most of the improvements, Don, I think the greatest one from my perspective on the board is that ring road. I think improving traffic, letting the buses go around potentially is immense. So, I think, I think that's, you look at the graph, and it's just a little line, and you got all of these, you know, windows and pillars, but this, this little dash, I think, has such an impact. So, that's it, thanks.
Ms. Guns.
I don't have any questions, just a couple comments. And obviously, as a Wabansy parent, along with your fan club over there, I was gonna also mention ring road, so I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Carubus, 'cause I know you were saying, Amy, it's not a big deal, you know, it doesn't feel like it is. were saying, Amy, it's not a big deal, it, you know, it doesn't feel like it is to a lot of people. And it's not exciting, no. I mean, it's not the most exciting part, but it is for, and all these parents would agree, where it is actually extremely exciting. I wanted to say, I really love the thought that was put in from what students realistically actually use, how much space they use, how much locker room space they use, you know, and making it efficient. And getting natural light anywhere in Wabonzi will be a huge improvement because yes, students do comment on that often. Yeah, you don't know what it's doing outside. So, all of that is really exciting. I appreciate the fact that we are looking at this as an equity project as well to make all three high schools, you know, as much as we can, um, similar in what they offer and absolutely cannot wait for the auditorium. So, that was all. Super excited.
Ms. Pozdick.
Um, these plans are very exciting. Um, my favorite part's the natural light because it's good for our health. It's good for everyone's health, with our district focused on mental health and physical well-being. Natural daylight is gonna do it. I also love that by opening up the building, it allows students to feel like they're all part of that together. So, great work. Thank you.
Ms. Dumming.
As a, a parent of two alum from Wabonzi, this is, this is absolutely thrilling. Um, the, it's so important for the community to know that, um, across the entire district, as we were thinking about plans and, and listening to the presentations, that it was really important for us to see our elementary schools all have that safe and security element, you know, done, uh, equitably. Our three high schools, because we have wonderful, you know, we are, um, award-winning district and making sure that, um, all of our students have that same opportunity for that equitable academic, um, success is, is really important. So, just seeing what we're doing here is, uh, is absolutely thrilling and not only will parents appreciate ring, but just the community because it is, it's crazy at that, you know, during those times. So, it will be so much appreciated and I love the fact that you mentioned, how can we bring, and it, it's, it's so you, Mr. Stipp, um, but to think about the seniors because I was literally sitting here and thinking, oh, my gosh, those students who are seniors, you know, what, how do they feel that year? Um, so, I really, really hope that you're able to look at something for them to get that, get that feel before they leave. So, thank you for thinking of that and great work. I'm so looking forward to the next two presentations, but, uh, this is fantastic. And I agree with Ms. Pozdick, the light is wonderful and I think the students will just have a s- such a different feel when they walk into that school and, um, you know, hopefully will, will help create just a wonderful bonding, increased bonding opportunity amongst students. Thanks.
Ms. Jane.
We just saw black and white images of what it could be, so, and there is so much ooh and ah with that, that, uh, we are so excited to see how this comes about. I was just reflecting and thinking about our boundary design discussions not too long ago and how, at that time, I came to learn that we had the greatest square footage in Wabonzi and how we were all shocked by that fact and simply because of the way this building has been designed. And what you have proposed today, particularly in addition to the natural light, what really struck me is, uh, the security aspect of it, the flow of, of movement and mobilization in the buildings, the ability for faculty and administrators to see more students at one time. Um, it, it's not only good from a safety standpoint, but from a community building standpoint, to see each other and for faculty to be close together. I think those designs, look, I mean, if I was teaching, I'd be very excited to be with my, my team in one space where there's spaces to collaborate. And then I also want to just commend you guys on your thoughtfulness regarding, how can I use a space in different ways? With the example of the wrestling room and of course, the lockers and the gyms and just being so thoughtful about it. Designing is hard. I mean, I know just remodeling one of my rooms in my home, i- it could go multiple different ways and how do you remain thoughtful, um, and stay to your purpose? Uh, that's not always easy, but you guys seem to have, uh, had some great discussions and this proposal looks very exciting. So, thank you.
Mr. Rising.
Uh, just echoing some of the things, um, I'm really excited. It's just so much more of a welcoming environment, just looking at it when you walk in and you kind of see the, I mean, it's, it's always been kind of grand in the central area of Wabonzi, but now it's just gonna be so much more welcoming, so much more light. The commons right there, super excited about that. In some ways, you are gonna be unique because the flexible seating that you're gonna have there is really cool, um, which you guys deserve it if anybody does. Uh, you know, the library, totally excited in, about the P E area. Principal Stipp and I have had many discussions about the field, so finally, glad that, that is going to, uh, get the needed improvement. It, it's so, thanks to, you know, the district team, the, the school administrative team, White and Company, all the thoughts and, uh, plans you put into this. So, thanks.
So, I'll just echo what everybody was saying. I think this is a very thoughtful plan. Remind me what, uh, year the ring road will be put in?
Well, we're, we're, we're working through that with our construction management team, what makes the most sense, but I think right now, we're targeting 27.
Okay. Yeah, I'm very thoughtful and I, I, I agree with the whole, all the light comments that that's extremely important. I honestly, I will say, I live in dread when I have to go over to Wabonzi and I have to go to the second floor and heaven forbid, the third floor. I would never, I'm like, can't find my way up there for anything, but it's, it is a confusing layout that is just incredible. Like, I, kudos to all the students that know where they're going in that place, but even sometimes I'll ask someone and they're like, I don't know.
Yeah. People ask me, I'm like, I, who's the teacher? I don't know. But we love it. We know, we know kind of where the hiding, it'll be interesting, uh, study when it's all said and done and people are like, oh, I kind of miss the, you know, the quirkiness of some of it.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, um, so it's very exciting. It's exciting to see all of the work that went into the referendum and everything turn into reality. So, I think we're all like super excited. My husband will be extra excited because every year I try and go to all the holiday concerts and every year, I get tons of complaints from my husband about the seats at Wabonzi. Like, I don't want to go because my butt gets sore, you know? So, so we're looking forward to that new experience this year, so.
President, I want to have one additional question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I have to, I do have one additional question. Third floor, uh, Emmy, as you continue to, to walk through this and take a look, um, I, I was really surprised that there's just nothing that looks like it's feasible.
It's part of its charm, the dead ends on the third floor.
Unfortunately, the architecture that's there right now, the existing roof structure and where that aligns, where the kind of middle section of the roof, it doesn't allow for us to create a, a floor level that connects the two. So, we did explore that to try to connect them.
I did have one additional comment. I think we all kind of glossed over it because we're so excited by these beautiful Wabonzi renderings. Um, but I think, I feel pretty secure in saying that I'm super excited about those secure vestibules. It's gonna help me sleep better at night as a parent.
Yeah, for sure.
It's gonna help our district students feel safer, our staff feel safer, our families feel safer, um, and hopefully it'll just increase the flow in the schools, make things a little bit more organized that way and, um, that is really exciting that we're able to get that work started too.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that because that certainly is like a fundamental importance for us and, uh, I also know how challenging it was at Wabonzi, how far you had to go into the building to actually get to the main office or whatever. So, I think moving that forward and closer is major improvement for the parents too that have to drop off things or whatever. So, but great, thank you so much. And it was very nice to have, you know, you here, Jason, to also present with them. So, I, it, it shows that, you know, you are a big part of making the decisions here and providing input on what, what's needed. So, thank you.
You know, that's the key, the support is phenomenal.
I pay well, so I paid them all.
It's only too bad we can't snap our fingers and it all happens tomorrow.
All right, so let's move.
Stay just for the questions, if you're gonna do questions. Sure. Yeah.
Okay, well, uh, good evening, members of the board. Once again, I'm Steve Shear with, uh, White and Company, uh, me and Mr. David Perry from Burkett Center. I have the pleasure of updating you on the programming work at Niqua Valley High School. Um, like Wabonzi and really any high school project, um, this involved a lot of working closely, not only with the administration, but with the building leadership and even key staff and stakeholders at the building. So, we really appreciate their time that they gave to give feedback on the design and there's a lot of ownership in the design and what you're about to see. Um, there were a lot of sort of issues that were identified in the master plan for Niqua. Um, and these are all things that are considered in the work that you're about to see, but if you were to summarize it to sort of the three main drivers, um, for the work at Niqua, first and foremost, we just talked about it, safety and security. That was a through line of the master plan. There's a through line of Safer Stronger 204. It's a through line of the work that, um, you'll see today. For example, you'll see security vestibule at Niqua Valley High School too as part of the addition. But also, one of the main drivers is accommodating all the classes within one building. So, a lot of the renovation work and expansion work, um, is really centered around accommodating additional class of freshmen from the Burkett Center. And later tonight, you'll see all the efficiencies and opportunities that the district gains by repurposing the Burkett Center. An offshoot of that is this idea of consolidating and improving staff resources, um, and that's really sort of a means to accommodate sort of an additional student population. You'll see in the design that the more, there are certain ways that we could consolidate department offices and staff resources and student resources, um, that allowed opportunities to free up space in the existing building to create more classrooms for the additional class. Um, so, um, like Wabonzi, we spent a lot of time looking at the classroom counts at Burkett Center and the classroom counts at, um, Niqua Valley High School. And really accommodating the additional freshman class is really twofold. One is we looked at ways, how could we optimize the utilization of the existing building? How could we make sure that it's, we're maximizing the efficiency of how classes are scheduled? Um, and two, although that helps a lot, we need just additional space to accommodate, um, the additional classrooms and students. And where we're at today, we actually identified 10 more classrooms than where we're at, at the, um, master plan and that was just a result of going further into the design, better supporting programs and also making sure that not only do we have the right number of classrooms, but that we had the, the right amount of, um, spaces for things like intervention, academic resources, sort of those key, um, student resources that are as important as scheduled classrooms too. So, it was important during the design process that we just didn't accommodate, accommodate an additional class, um, just by providing more classrooms, but we wanted to do it in a way that didn't sort of compromise the student experience. So, this is, um, the overall campus. Again, we can't talk about the work at Niqua without addressing Burkett. So, the main driver here is that those students would move over to, um, the main campus and you'll see where we're proposing additions and renovations to accommodate that. Also, relative to the site plan is the new turf field, um, here at Niqua. Um, and then a lot of the site work is really just remediating from the construction work. So, around the additions, there'll just be some remediation of sidewalks and landscaping, um, after construction's all done. This is sort of in a large view where you could see the proposed expansion of the building. Um, really kind of two significant additions, one in front of the building, um, we're gonna maintain the main entrance, but, um, that addition in the front will, um, house some of those key student resources and staff resources. And then one addition in the back, that'll prob- primarily be classrooms and science labs, um, that'll also sort of, um, be able to connect to the academic wings of the building for better circulation and better wayfinding. This is a, you know, a simple diagram we did that both recognizes and sort of appreciates the clarity and how the existing building's laid out. Um, there's sort of a clean organization to Niqua Valley High School where you have the main entrance front and center, the main curb hallway, um, and that hallway sort of connects students to all the major common spaces in the building from performing arts on one end to athletics and P E on the other end and in the middle is the library. And then off that main hallway are the, sort of the three academic spokes where the core classrooms are housed. Um, we just acknowledge this because it was important in the planning that, you know, we didn't do anything that disrupted this clarity of organization, but in many ways, we wanted to maintain how cleanly organized the building was and in, and in some ways, sort of improve sort of the wayfinding and circulation through the building. And this is that in, in more detail. So, this is sort of the existing plan of Niqua Valley, it's sort of color-coded to how classrooms are currently scheduled and, um, throughout this diagram, we just kind of highlighted examples of those types of spaces that are important to the student experience in addition to classrooms themselves. Things like, um, resource centers, credit recovery, different intervention spaces. Um, that was key to, that we maintained spaces like those. Um, in fact, you'll see ways throughout the renovation and the new work that we actually wanted to make those spaces more commonplace and more readily, readily accessible to students as well. Um, so with that, David.
Good evening. First, I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to be here. I'm here in the absence of Dr. Fur. He was unable to be here today, so, uh, thanks for allowing me to be in your presence and to share some good work. Uh, for those who don't know me, my name's David Perry. I'm Assistant Principal, Lead Administrator at the Freshmen Center. I'll be entering my 28th year at Niqua Valley High School, so highly invested, bleed blue and gold. Uh, I'm excited about the project and a lot of the things, um, that we're gonna talk about today. Uh, my first year as a department chair in 2003, we opened the Freshmen Center, was a part of that planning committee of digging in and trying to figure out how to create the best experience under the circumstances that we've had. Uh, that building will have served us for 24 years when we transition and sunset our use of it. Um, and we look to serve the next generation of Wildcats under one roof in 2027. So, um, my task today is to walk you through a little bit more of the specifics, show you some of the diagrams. Uh, I also want to recognize we won't wow maybe as much as Wabonzi did. Uh, that's a tough act to follow, but we have different problems and different issues to solve and, uh, I'm really excited about what I saw from Wabonzi. I'm excited for them. I'm excited for our entire 204 community, just a lot of great work that's, uh, well-deserved. I look forward to seeing what, uh, what that building becomes. Um, but let's jump into Niqua Valley and some of the things that we need to look at today. I think our number one problem is that we're going to have seven to 800-plus students that annually come to us as freshmen that we're gonna need to incorporate under one roof. Um, so as you start to put together the plan that Steve had shared and taking a look at all the classroom spaces it takes to do that, we need more square footage to make that happen, obviously. If you think back when we opened the Freshmen Center, it was due to a lack of square footage and our need to expand. We did things even like the frontier program for seniors and we spread out as much as we could to try to create square footage. Uh, so that's the problem that we're going to tackle today. I do want to say that, uh, White has, White and Company has been extremely collaborative with our team, uh, really enjoyed working with them and I've been really impressed with a lot of the solutions, uh, that they've come up with. So, I'm gonna share those with you today. It really boils down to, I think, uh, two of the, two major exterior additions that Steve had mentioned, as well as what I've kind of narrowed down to three major interior adjustments that I think will serve, uh, our building and our, our community well. Uh, so we're gonna review that here in the following slides. We're gonna start in the back of the building and work our way forward tonight. And so, we're gonna start with, uh, the first addition that's in the back of the building. Uh, this is a two-story addition. It connects our C and our D wings together. Um, if you're familiar, if you've ever been in the back during bus drop-off, that's right where the students would walk in to entrance from buses. And that'll now be walled off with this addition and we'll have alternate entrances, uh, for buses moving forward. This addition will ultimately, between both levels, provide three science labs. When we looked at our master schedule and the projection of what it would be to bring our freshmen over, one of the things we really needed is the specialized spaces of science labs. Uh, not just an open space to put students, but we needed- Not just an open space to put students, but we needed space that could serve our science department. And so, in this, we gained three science labs. We gained five additional classrooms by doing this. And you'll see through some of the design, there's the unique area that probably doesn't fit well for a classroom but does do great for a collaborative space for students. I'm going to show you that. This is the only view that I'm going to have a chance to really do a great job of showing you. But in the red, on the left-hand side, that's the first floor. You're going to find out, I'm going to share a little bit later, how we gained some dining space. And that's going to be by taking over some of our current special education classrooms. So, in doing so, we need to relocate them. They're going to be centrally located, very much like Wabonzi, in one area in our D wing. This is proximal to their transport, drop-off and pickup. And I think this is going to serve our special education department really well. So, I just wanted to highlight that while it was on the map, okay? If we jump to the next slide, this really illustrates our science labs. On the left illustration, there's a physical science lab and a prep room that's on the second floor. And on the first floor, we have two life and earth science labs and prep rooms there, okay? On the next slide here, this is a kind of a first-floor pullout. So, we just broadened the view. The last view I showed you were just the science rooms. This is going to show on the first floor, the two science labs, as well as two traditional classrooms. They're marked as math, but as we figure out our master schedule, we'll figure out what content area will be in those spaces. And this is a really good look at that collaborative space. So, again, the way the building will take a little turn there in a slightly L shape, not a great space for a classroom, but this is going to allow really great space for students for breakouts. This could be for official blended learning classes where some days students are in class, some they are out. It also could be just great breakout spaces as small groups are working together on projects in the class of classrooms that are proximal to that area, okay? This is the second floor. And on this view, you see that we only have the one science lab and we gained three classrooms. The collaborative space is really a mirror image of what you'd seen on the prior slide, first and second floor. This is a nice rendering that just shows you a close-up view of what that collaborative space can look like. Obviously, furniture isn't officially picked out, but what you can see is there's some flexible seating, some different options for ways students can work together in different size groups and in different ways to be able to accomplish some of the things that they're working on in their classroom. And this is a nice pull-out view. This is what you'd see if you drove into the back of the building. I'll say this with both additions. I'll echo this again later. But what I've appreciated about White is I feel like they've put together a design that this could have been here the entire time Nequa Valley's been open. And at the same time, a couple of modern touches with the extra glass that allows some more sunlight to get in. We've talked about everything from mental health to just, just a sheer appreciation to have some sunlight in your day. And they've allowed that to happen. And so, I appreciate that about this view and what they've accomplished with that. We're going to move towards the front of the building. This is a snapshot of what would be our D wing office. We have large staff offices in our B and D wings, so their B and D 100 are the spaces that are there. And for this conversion, we're going to be moving our staff members out. When we get to the last two slides, you're going to see the addition that's in the front of the building that will house those staff members. That's where they'll be going. But their exit allows us to do some good work and create more classroom square footage in the heart of the building here. This is a really nice space. You'll see that the English rooms in the upper-right corner in that pink, those are where the B and D 100 currently is. In addition, taking a look at the space, we wanted to utilize it for just some various options. So, we have two breakout rooms where students could maybe more quietly go work in and work in small groups, or a teacher may meet with some students in there to counsel them or to work with them on some projects, as well as some collaborative seating that you'll see there. The term used tonight, wayfinding, I like that term. I'm going to pick that up and run with it. But for me, it just provides better access. If you've ever been to Nequa Valley in a passing period, it is nicely organized, but that main thoroughway in the main hallway is extremely crowded. And to add another 700 to 800 students total in that passing period is one where it's going to get even tighter, right? And so, back in the special ed wing, as well as here in this blended area, it creates two thoroughways that students can pass through. And I'm hopeful that that'll help eliminate some of the congestion in the main hallway as well. This is a rendering of that collaborative space that we just saw in this blended learning area. To the right are the breakout rooms. If you look through the glass of the breakout rooms, that's a classroom in the far back. And again, you have some nice flexible seating and options for students to be able to choose. Talked earlier about just the need for square footage. That happened. It obviously carries over to dining and our lunch space as well. That circular area, known as our commons, is where we currently serve students. And if you've ever attended a lunch period, you know that it's crowded. And we have students wanting to select their own spaces. Some just sit on our elevated little brick pillar there and enjoy getting some work done. And I'm looking forward to some flexible seating where students can choose where they want to go sit and have some more options. So, in addition to that main common, we need to provide some more spaces for students to have lunch. We've accomplished that in two ways. One, on the lower level of our normal commons, you'll see that is our currently, our faculty lunchroom. And we're going to take that over for student seating. And then, to the right of that, as you enter into the main hallway, those are currently three special education classrooms. Those will all be opened up to allow additional seating as well. And I'll just remind you, that's really the rationale for our need to be able to put special ed in one location, which you saw in that red section to the prior. Let's take a look at some of the seating. This would be a view from the classrooms that we would take over and set up. And again, like Wabonzi, see the flexible seating. I think we all appreciate, if you go into a Starbucks, sometimes you just want to sit on your own. Sometimes you want to get together with a group of friends. Our students are no different. They operate different socially and different on a daily basis. So, I am excited about the opportunities that the furniture options bring. In this particular rendering, if you look to your left through there, that shows you the traditional commons that are currently there, okay? This brings us to the second addition, which is in the front of the building. It's the one that will be most noticeable to our community because it's going to be facing 95th Street. One highlight, for those that have been to Nequa, you see in the courtyard, the circular courtyard, the sidewalk that goes around in that semicircle. Next time you're there, take a look, and you'll see the distance from the sidewalks to the current building. If you look at this illustration, this provides you a good pathway to understand how far the building will be expanded out. It'll come out just shy of where those current sidewalks are. On this first floor, I'll start with maybe one of the most important points that Ms. Faustic pointed out earlier, and that's the secure vestibule. This allows us for better visibility in the front of the building and allows us to check-in and vet our visitors and guests before they enter the building. So, two-step process to get into our school, and that is a win for us. I also think it works really well with the extension out in the front for us to naturally be able to put that, maybe a little bit easier architecturally than some other places. This is where probably the magic happens for us to be able to get more square footage for students, and that is moving our class offices or our staff offices to the front of the building. On the left and the right wings there, in that light blue, the baby blue, those are both staff offices. They will each house approximately 45 staff members, as well as some department chair offices and a conference room there, you see closest to 95th on the front end of there. So, I like this solution. I'll pause here. I'm going to point out a couple other things, but I'll pause to say, I like this design element from White because they've solved a square footage need inside the building by moving staff out. And what that does is it disrupts students at, I think, the least possible way. Because we're really, we're not putting in a lot of classroom space there, so we can start working on the exterior without it taking away our greater need for student space on the inside. I think that was just a really smart use of design here. And there's some stairwells that you'll see on the right in those staff offices. Those will go up to the staff office that'll be mirrored on the second floor as well. There's some kitchenettes on here for staff to be able to sit and eat. You've probably heard, you heard me mention in the dining area, we're taking away the faculty kitchen area, but one will be gained in each staff office. So, some good staff time for our teachers to be able to sit together and have lunch and enjoy their company there. Lastly, I think the thing that I want to point out are somewhat Steve mentioned. We have intervention programs that are scattered throughout the building. And in kind of the darker blue in the, towards the main hallway, those intervention programs are going to be moved to the main hallway section. The entrances will be right off of there. I think it increases our visibility, makes it more accessible, and it's more inviting for our students to be able to walk in. It's much more clear where you go to get help, which I think is important for our students to understand. So, that was a really nice touch we're looking forward to. That obviously creates more square footage back in the building where those intervention spaces were, too, so. This is a pull-out dollhouse view of the second floor. Very much a mirror image of the first floor with the staff offices and the department chair and the meeting room. A couple of the unique changes on the second floor is we have four class houses. Our second floor will have all four of those class houses, two on each side. And those class houses are proximal to each other. I think it'll be nice for collaboration. Just as a reminder, our class houses house our counselors, our social workers, our dean of students and secretary in those spaces. In addition to that, there, if you take a look at the forum room right above the main entrance, in 1997, this seemed like a tremendous idea, is to have a tiered lecture hall-style room. And it served its purpose perhaps in that time. But what we have found out for many years is that that space would better suit us if it was more flexible, if we didn't have the tiers. Everything from furniture that you can't purchase anymore, as chairs break, to just sheer functionality. And so, what we'll be doing is just taking out the tiers, creating a flat space, changing the front of that room to the front, so that no matter where you're seated, you'd be able to see a screen or a speaker. And you can see the setup now is for chairs. You might, that might be a setup for a guest speaker who's in front and speaking to classes or clubs or organizations. You also will be able to, we're going to have some furniture on wheels. We can go out and do some roundtables and do some collaborative sessions with students, both during the school day as well as after school. So, that creates a very nice functional space that we're excited about, okay? And this is the exterior view. And I would challenge you, when you look at this, I think you would look at it and say, that just fits. It fits within the way the building looks. And I think it'll be pretty seamless, again, with a nice, modern touch of the extra glass up front. Our staff members and a lot of students are going to receive a lot of extra daylight that we haven't seen before. And we obviously, granted, had more than Wabonzi to start, but now it'll be even more than we had, which is great.
Okay, now, we wanted to give an overview on the implementation, how all this work will sort of take place at Nequa. Again, we're sort of fine-tuning logistics and working with our construction management partners, but this will sort of paint sort of a general approach. So, phase one, we'll start with the two additions. And typically, those begin in the spring when the weather turns and the ground thaws. That's work that could begin as school continues to wrap up towards the summer. Phase one will also include the turf field replacement. And then, as we kind of hit that first summer and the kids are, and the students are out of the building, the renovation work will be focused on sort of the end of the building you see in red, which is primarily the PE and athletic spaces. And then, all throughout that first school year, the additions would continue to be under construction. And then, when we hit the second summer, that's when the renovation work will be focused on, two of the academic wings and the main hallway. And then, the additions will be wrapping up by the end of that summer. So, by the start of the '27, '28 school year, that's when the additions will be done. They could be occupied. The freshman class can move over. And then, there'll be, an entire school year takes place. And then, that last summer, when again, the building's been vacated, will be the focus of the remainder of the renovation work, which are primarily sort of the performing arts and kind of career tech space in that last academic wing. So, big picture, three summers worth of work, but really only one school year where there's ongoing construction work happening.
Wanted to just talk about some construction considerations. I think just thinking through the impact to our community, to our students and to our families as they approach, I think the first thing you'll notice here, to your, if you're looking northwest, that is the entrance into our building. You'll see the circle drive is going to be closed off, obviously, because they're going to be doing a lot of work there. I think our community, just so you know, you'll see a lot of construction and contractor equipment and vehicles. And you'll see in blue, it's a little tough to see, but those are some areas that we have kind of designated for our contractor parking. We have before-school entrances to our students will be over at door 46 and 53. And then, as we welcome guests and check them in, we'll be moving to a secure, single entry at door three. So, as guests come in throughout the day, we'll have our security system set up there, our raptor system to check people in to that single entry point into the school. There'll also be some bus changes in terms of where we drop students off and the doors in which they enter into the back of the building. As we get a little bit closer to this project, Dr. Fear certainly will be, as he always does, strong communication out to our community about any changes that are going to happen. We'll have some different drop-off patterns that will occur, and we'll send out some maps and just some specific details on what that will look like as the time approaches and gets a little bit closer.
So, I think if we want to take questions for Nequa, we'll...
Okay, thanks. Ms. Jane, you can start.
Thank you. Again, these designs look, and proposals look very thorough and thoughtful, makes a lot of sense, you know, just the whole design of bringing the staff up front but accessible to the students. It just all seems to click and makes sense to me. I appreciate the discussion around the lunchroom. That was one of my questions, was how are we getting the additional freshman class in and then still having space, which you addressed. So, a couple of questions I had, one was regarding lockers. Is that something students still use? I know a large part of Nequa High School, there are good chunks where there's lockers. I don't know how often they're used. That was one question. And then, the second question I had was around the collaborative spaces. Is that part of the class? Or is this students who may have like a study period or waiting area, like, I wasn't clear how that space would be utilized, so.
I'll speak to the lockers. Lockers are vastly underutilized in this day and age. It's, students carry a lot with them. And, you know, with less and less assigned textbooks, you know, a lot is done more digitally. The Chromebook is replaced a lot, not all, but a lot. And so, most students find what they need, they put in their backpack. We've went to lockers optional for the last few years. So, students elect and sign up if they want a locker. We would continue to do that and would have enough lockers to continue to do that for students that want a locker. But I will say, even those that elect one early in the year typically break away from it and don't end up utilizing it. The Freshman Center especially, they don't know, so they just sign up for one. And we probably find of all of those who signed up for a locker, maybe 3% to 5% actually access it on a regular basis. So, yeah, we have actually, if you've been in our building, we have slowly but surely moved some locker banks out in favor for some collaborative work spaces and areas where students can seat and have a little bit more flexibility in the school. So, that's to answer your first question. The second question was...
Just the use of the collaborative spaces in between the classrooms.
Collaborative spaces, thank you. So, we have some classes that are blended classes, and that means that some students are, you're in class some days, other days you're rotated out. And we need places for those students to be able to work on the days that they're not in the class, working directly with the teacher. So, some sections are blended, some sections are not blended. However, we always say there's like blended, capital B blended and lowercase b blended. Like, just because you aren't a titled blended class doesn't mean that you don't try some blended concepts within your class. And that might be allowing two groups that are prepared and ready to start working in some small groups, to exit out of the class and to work in some of those areas and start to chip away, whereas maybe some of the students in the classrooms that need a little more support before they're ready to get there, have some more questions with the teacher, they're able to do that. So, the space, I see it could be used before school as just a casual, anybody could sit down and use it. I think during class time primarily, though, what you'll see there are those classrooms in proximity to that area, kind of mindfully using it for kind of academic purposes.
Thank you. That makes a lot of sense to me. It's super exciting, and I think students are really going to love all the options that you're providing. And again, the natural lighting is welcomed, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Dumming?
Love the presentation, love the, that light on both the back and the front. And you're right, it looks like it could have been parked, but it gives it a nice new look. I did have a question. You mentioned, you know, with the additional freshmen coming and passing periods, are you guys, and I know you talked about there being a couple of areas where you're going to have two pathways available. Any other thoughts that you guys are thinking about to address the numbers at one time? Just wondered if there's anything else that you're thinking of? And I didn't know, and I didn't know whether, from a structural standpoint, or whether you as staff are thinking of any possible changes.
Yeah, well, just some architectural points. I think the removal of... Yeah, well, just some architectural points. I think the removal of the lockers because of the lack of use of them, it's gonna really open up that main hallway, because right now, they're kind of lined with the locker banks in there, too. There are two areas in the existing academic wings where we're gonna create a new hallway, because even though the building is clearly organized, if you go down one academic wing in one hallway, you actually can't connect to the hallway, that's on the other side. So we're creating two moments that can do that, and the addition in the back was specifically designed to connect two academic wings, which I think is gonna take a lot of traffic off the main hallway as students traverse.
Okay.
And we're also going to be pulling together just a small committee to talk through all of the logistics of things we want to look at, everything from increased traffic to programs, like, you know, we have advisory at our freshman center, and that would need to look vastly different at the main building. So we'll have some committees together over the upcoming months that we're gonna sit down and work through some of those issues and talk through some things as a staff.
And then the other, one of the other questions I had, with all of the staff moving, staff spaces being upstairs, are there any concerns for, as far as students, just during different periods of the day, or will staff just still be assigned at, you know, as the students are passing in the hallway? I'm just talking about ensuring that, having that adult supervision or the staff supervision during passing periods and being present when the students are...
I think if anything, it increases a presence of staff. They'll be going to their office in the front, which, remember, that is our main thorough way. So a lot of students are there, so I think it puts staff in proximity. And we also have supervision assignments that won't change either, both with dean's assistants and staff presence throughout the building.
Thank you. Really, really nice job. Very excited to see what it looks like.
Thank you.
Ms. Fazdak?
Thank you. Before I start, I just want to clarify, the staff areas are both, are gonna be both on first and second floor, correct?
That's correct.
So it will be for both of those?
That's correct.
Was that...
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay.
Absolutely. Four staff offices, two on each level.
Okay, so then they'll walk past us, okay. This is very exciting. I won't lie, I'm a little sad to see the freshman building separated, because in my ideal world, each of the high schools would have a freshman building. I know it doesn't, each school enjoys how they do it, but I know that you guys will have a great integration program to make it work, so that there is excitement about having all of your students in one building, and there's clearly a lot of thought going into how to make this work well. The design is beautiful. This is just a very small question, but on slide 63, is there a door from that new math and science addition to the D Wing? Because it looks like in the rendering, there's one on the C. I assume there was one on both sides to connect them, but I didn't see it in the drawing. So I was just curious if there was one. See, on the top wall, there's not a door there.
Yes, for sure. There'll be a door connecting into both academic wing.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's an anomaly being these early concept renderings, but...
Okay, so yeah, so it will actually be a thorough fair for students to be, okay.
Hundred percent.
That sounds great. Yes, right, yeah. And there'll be some great southern exposure there, right? I think that's the southeast exposure from all that light coming into that area of the building, too. I think it looks great. I don't wish to be part of any driving to school when this is happening, because I'm sure like at most of the high schools, during school drop-off and pickup, if you choose to bring your student, it's a...
I don't blame you. We'll do our best to make it as efficient as possible, though.
I'm sure you will, thank you.
Mr. Rising?
Yeah, love it all. My primary, my only question is on the future secondary entrance back in the additional wing area. Dave, is that gonna just primarily be for the special ed students, since that new special ed area is right there, or is that gonna be for all students? Because it didn't seem like there was a good, oh, I mean, I suppose, it didn't seem like there was a good thorough fair into the school from that new secondary entrance, because they kind of have to traverse. I was just wondering how that secondary entrance was gonna essentially be used. Yeah, I think it was sixty...
I could address some of the things we've talked about so far in design. Right now, the entrance for the special education students is actually off the end of that existing academic wing. I don't foresee that changing, given that the special ed classrooms will be right there. This kind of entrance is really just to make up for the fact that the existing doors that are behind this, where students are coming in during drop-offs, will be now enclosed with the building. So this will just be another way of students to enter the building during drop-off arrival time.
Okay. All right, thanks. But that's an unmanned area, right? It's just doors, correct? There's no staff there or anything like that?
In the morning, we do have dean's assistants who are in the back. They help welcome buses, they check in, they check in all the buses to make sure as they come in and supervise students in the back of the building.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Ms. Guns?
I do want to say, a couple of years ago, Dr. Fuer was nice enough to take me on a tour of NIWA, and as we were touring it, we were talking about how it would become possible to move the freshmen over there, if that was something that was happening. It wasn't positive back then. But it's so neat to see how you guys are going to be doing it. Now, I think the additions with the use of the glass looks beautiful, and I agree, it does look like it could have just been built in that way. And I know we didn't ooh and ah out loud, but we were all in our minds, oohing and ahing, because the work that's being done at NIWA is amazing, too, and you guys do have that very unique issue of combining all of your freshmen over into the school. So I appreciate all the thought that has been put into it. I appreciate all the comments made by fellow board members. The one thing I did want to mention, too, though, was I really love when you mentioned the intervention areas being moved up towards the front, where it's so easily accessible. And I think that's absolutely wonderful, making it easy for every student to know where they can go. So, thank you. I think this is all really exciting.
Thank you.
Mr. Kurubis?
I'm looking forward to the transition from the freshman center to the high school. As you may recall, Wobonzi did have a freshman center, yeah, with Fisher. It was the freshman center, which presented its own challenges with students crossing those roads. So I welcome the transition. You know, my mom taught at Old Crone, as we call it, so it's good to see it progressing. You mentioned the lunch, and I consider our capacity issues solely around lunch, based on how early the first lunch is. And so as we build the space, you know, and we throw in more students, I'd like to make sure that the consideration of the space, make sure we're not having lunch at like nine, eight, you know. So you don't have to answer the question, it's a comment, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but that's my first thought, is that the capacity is based on when lunch starts. Kind of my second point is, go to slide 65, please. So you gave me 140 slide, 65, please. Yep, you gave me 104 slide presentation, and I appreciate it's from the 30,000-foot view level, and I'm glad you didn't give me a presentation that showed where all the electric outlets are gonna be. But this slide jumped out at me in the fact that we don't have any landscaping. And so we're going in there, we've got trucks, we're doing stuff. I'm kind of a big fan of trees as well. You had a prior slide on 56, which detailed where all the existing trees are, and since we're adding to the school, we're gonna be taking some out. So I'd like to see administration, you know, include some landscaping, some trees designed, because we talk about light being beneficial, but also nature is. So I'd like that included as we go forward. It doesn't have to be, you know, the first step, but it could be part of the long-term planning. So any comments on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make a quick comment. We, we as administration are fans of trees as well. I will, I will say, we've already had discussions with NIWA, with the NIWA faculty, they may be ahead of you a little bit, and they've actually really also talked about how to activate that courtyard area, and what we need to see from a landscaping perspective there in a way that would really tie in with some academic programming, with some science or science classes, and everything like that, too. So it's, it has been, it has already been brought up with our group, too, so we will, we will ensure that we keep the focus on that. I will also address the lunch comment. We also, I think, in many ways, see capacity through the lens of lunch. What you, currently, our high schools offer five lunch periods. That period three is the period that, is that nine o'clock lunch hour, the dreaded nine o'clock lunch hour you referenced earlier. With both the designs you saw at Wobonzi and here, from a capacity standpoint, it would be possible to move to four-period lunches. There is another challenge, however, with that lunch from a programming standpoint in building a master schedule, and that's the piece that is still sort of TBD, if we're gonna be able to figure that out. And again, in talking with our building leaders, they still have some concerns about the challenge that going to four-period lunch would bring to developing a master schedule.
All right, and my last comment is slide 55, and it really deals with two equity issues, 55, next one. Two equity issues kind of among our schools and kind of among our sexes. The, you know, we're making some changes to the turf field, and, you know, we're talking about moving the soccer on the other ones on Wobonzi. I'm not sure how, you know, Matea operates with their fields. And NIWA's a little unique in that we have the Park District there, where we have some partnerships with. So I'd like, you know, consideration as we do things, to the extent possible, to make sure that kind of our sports programming from literally the 30,000-foot view in this slide, has similarities between the schools as we go through this. And then among the sexes, there's also talk about, you know, the baseball fields being similar to the softball fields. And so I'd like to make sure that when we go through this, whether, maybe it's not part of the referendum, but, you know, it's with our dollars as we go through this, that since we are breaking ground somewhere, that we consider some of the, you know, athletic fields. Because we are gonna, because we are, we're moving, you know, there's an opportunity to use those two fields north of it differently, or make improvements to other fields to, you know, put them on similar footing. That's it, thanks.
So thank you for the presentation, and again, a very thoughtful design. My kids went to NIWA when it was at its heyday of size. I think my daughter was the first class that went over to the Frontier Building, but my son was there when it was like thousands of kids in every class, every grade level. So I, and I'm there fairly often still to this day, and yeah, my concerns was the passing period, which I'm glad was in your thinking of how to kind of help that, because I can't imagine with 700 more kids in there what that would look like. And also the lunchroom, you know, how crowded it is, and how I do see kids sitting on the, you know, side or on the areas, just trying to find a spot where they can sit by themselves. So I really do appreciate that. I also like, again, incorporation of light into the building, but I do have one question now. From my working experience, my last building that I worked in was very much glass, like everywhere, even kind of the curved roof was glass. And there was a lot of problem with heating and cooling. So how is that going to impact these buildings with all this glass? I mean, do we see this as a big, like, expense increase, or?
That's part of the ongoing work that's happening right now. So right now, we have an energy modeler modeling the building from an energy perspective. We're also doing daylight studies for those glass areas, and that'll inform like the types of glass we specify, what other kind of shading we want to provide on the glass. But that's something we look at very closely, and we have dedicated people kind of looking at that right now as we go through it.
Yeah, because we had, I worked at Bell Labs, and we had just a terrible time trying to keep the front of those buildings at a temperature that you could, you know, stand. And so I, I'm looking forward to hearing more about how we're going to deal with that. So I really love the light, though, coming in is so important. So, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we'll welcome Dr. Howard, Ms. Tabiri, and Mr. Jovanini, I believe.
Moving on to the next one. You have two district-level administrators up here, because with the freshmen moving back to Maine, we have the opportunity to turn the Burkett Center into a hub for the district, right? That's gonna benefit students, faculty, and families across the entire district. So during Phase One, we're bringing our two signature programs under one roof. That's Steps and Gail McKenzie, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the next couple of slides. And during Phase Two, we have the opportunity to use these spaces in more diverse ways, like including a welcome center for newcomers to our country and our district, increasing our pathways offerings, K8 STEM spaces, and then multipurpose spaces.
So with that, what you're seeing on the screen is a site plan specifically of the Burkett Center. It was originally designed, I don't know if you know this, but for a middle school, and back in 1995, there was an addition added in 2002, and it's housed freshmen now for several years. So what we're looking at is now with the freshmen moving out and exploring the different possibilities that these, that could be used for this center, as Dr. Howard mentioned. Not gonna go through the existing plan in detail, but I do want to make a couple notes. The main entrance that's off to the left of the screen, which is the north side of the building, is still gonna be a primary entrance to the building, as well as that secondary entrance off to the right of the screen or the south side of the building. What you're looking at right now is a planning diagram in early planning phases. As we know that this building is looking at more of a multipurpose type of building, how are we going to separate the spaces and the key programs so that they were at times considered suites within themselves? So this, as part of the Phase One approach with the Steps and Gail McKenzie moving over, we really looked at that west side of the building being that primary location to house those two programs. Steps could utilize the first floor, and we could create a new main entrance off of that north side of the site. That would be a primary entrance for Steps, but also after the school day started, it could be that visitor entrance that would serve both Steps and Gail McKenzie. The morning entrance for Gail McKenzie would be off to the south side of the site, where Gail McKenzie could get dropped, students could get dropped off in the morning, and then they can go up to the second floor, which would house their programs. And then east of the center of the building, and then the far east side of the site would be used for more of those multipurpose programs such as Pathways, the K8 program, as well as the different multi-use programs for the district. So then, after going through kind of the high-level planning diagram stages, existing proposed plan of kind of color coding each of the uses, we're gonna focus today on really that Phase One planning process, as the district administration is still working through some of those Phase Two programming elements in more detail. So if we dive into the first floor plan, and it's in a large first floor plan of the Steps program, we've worked with the administrators and... STEPS program, we've worked with the administrators and staff over at STEPS to kind of understand the needs of the spaces for these students. Creating a secure entryway on that east side is important, as we've heard all night long, and that will continue to be important at this building. And then moving through, kind of addressing not only their classroom needs, but STEPS has a unique program element to it. And one of the highlights of the program is going to include, that we'll dive into a little bit, is their life skills apartment, which really teaches the students kind of basic needs and living on their own. That would be something new to the district, that to create a dedicated space to allow for those teaching components. As well as while they currently have a vocational programming where they have micro businesses that get run out of here, but creating that as their jewel. They really, after talking to the people over there, that's kind of one of their prime programs that is really community-based. So putting that on in the center of the building to really showcase all the activity and collaboration that's happening with the students in order to create those businesses.
So this is a, so this is a rendering of the main entrance. You know, we were going for a professional look and feel, but that's something that's also warm and welcoming. You know, that's really important for the young adults in this program as they transition from school. We wanted to look less like school and more like the businesses they're going to be working in. So in this slide, in the upper left, you can see the waterfall that's at the current STEPS location. And while we're not going to recreate the waterfall, we will create the calming atmosphere through the careful selection of materials and furniture like the ones on this slide, because the calming features reduce stress, they increase focus, and they help the students feel less overwhelmed. Okay, so these are the proposed vocational spaces. And again, you see the use of glass here. We want this to be sort of a showcase of all the activities and work that's going on on the inside. This is the dining space, and just like the other buildings, there's kind of a mixture of furniture here to give students options and to look more like sort of a workplace dining area. This is the life skills space that Amy just spoke about. It is a full apartment, so students will be able to develop all of those skills and work toward living independently. And so this is now what Gail McKenzie looks like. So the Gail McKenzie piece, we really like, because it allows us room to sort of grow and develop into some of the programs that we had spoken about, I think, that last week. You can see that in the red, we have the special education program, that's our achieve program. And then on the opposite side, we have our credit recovery and a couple of additional spaces that will allow us to kind of grow our program and meet the needs of more of our general education students. So when we get into Phase Two, we'll start developing those other spaces. You can see in purple is kind of the flexible use spaces that we're labeling as multipurpose right now. And in there, we could do anything from special programs, guest speakers, professional learning for adults, and then moving on to some of the gold spaces, which represent the STEM lab spaces. And that's going to be for our K-8 students. In the light blue, that's where we're going to expand our career technical education and our pathways work. And Briada Giavini is going to be here and tell us a little more about that.
Thank you for allowing me to talk about some of our capstone courses that we're looking to add over at the Burkett Center. When we talk about each one of these, kind of define what we mean by capstone. The first is some type of culminating experience for our students within one of those pathways, where there's some type of course leading up to this before they actually enroll into this at the Burkett Center. In addition, one of the goals being, for all of our CTE courses, but specifically some of these advanced capstone courses, would be trying to embed at least one of these in there, if not multiple, whether having dual credit with College of DuPage, embedded internships, and/or industry credentials of some sort with each one of these. The three that we've highlighted are really of high interest to us, that we're really excited about. The first one being the Health Science Pathway Capstone Course. As we all know, healthcare courses are of high demand for our students. It's a degrees that our students are interested in, and this is something that we've been talking a lot about, and how can we provide the student, our experience for our students? Really excited about that. Our science, Family and Consumer Science, and PE departments have some courses that are kind of connected to healthcare in some way, but this will be really intentional about offering some of those skills that could spring more of them to any type of group in healthcare, whether it's in the therapies, doctor, medicine, nursing, anything related to that. The second one is our culinary capstone course. The really benefit of this one is really looking at the industrial side of the culinary, some of the things they would see after high school, is what we're trying to do within this class. If you go into our Family and Consumer Science kitchens now, they're amazing, they're great. But it's different than what they would go to in kind of the next level, and that's what this could do, provide that experience, what they would see at College of DuPage or other some post-secondary high school experience. And our last one is construction. Last year, the Board of Education approved a construction two class, which allowed us to expand our trades offerings in our high schools. The biggest benefit of offering this at the Burkett Center is truly space. If you look at our construction classes now, they're trying to build construction designs in a really tight space. As we expand that, it really limits what we can do. And so having a larger space allows us to offer more authentic experiences for our students, expand what we can do. Then as we, as we go into the interior side of those trades, and when we start looking at electricity, HVAC, plumbing, we have more space to do that, and so we're not limited on what we're allowing our students to do. And the benefit of all three of these is allowing more space and time for us to connect with our local professionals, so they can connect with our students on a more consistent So this is where we want to talk a little about what that student experience would look like. That graphic on the right is kind of our guiding light for CTE. This is the framework that the state outlines for endorsement work for students. I'll give you a quick highlight. To award a student endorsement in any career pathway area, we have to have a plan for them. We have to offer internship experience hours for them. And the easiest way to do that is when it's embedded into a course. We need to offer six hours of college credit, whether that's AP or dual credit, and then we have to have two touchpoints with mentorships, team-based challenges within these. And through these courses, we're able to do more of that and be more intentional within the actual classes, instead of trying to rely on outside of experiences. And the other great part about this experience for our students is they still are connected to our high school courses. Mr. Perry referenced the Frontier captains that we had over a decade ago. Students are still able to take part of their schedule at their home building and then come over for this extended experience at the Burkett Center, which is a great opportunity for us. And then we'll continue to dive into more of the specifics as we launch this for 2028.
So with that, we really can't start any work until the freshmen move out. So the Phase One work, which includes the STEPS program, would happen the summer of '27. And all of that work for the STEPS suite could be completed for the summer of '27. However, there's a small piece to the entry component that is isolated, that would have to be the elevator to get access to Gail McKenzie that might bleed into the school year, but it would be separated where it wouldn't affect the teaching suite. So STEPS moves in then summer, or school year for '27, '28. And then the potential winner of '28 could start the east side of the building, which again is completely isolated from the STEPS program. So there would not be any interference between construction and the students. And then the summer of '28, the second floor of Gail McKenzie could be completed. That really concludes, target completion date now at Burkett Center would be after the 2029 school year. I open it up now.
Okay, well, just next steps. We're going to continue board of education updates, continue board of educational approvals as work is contracted, and regular updates to the community through board actions and our safer, stronger site. So questions?
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you. First, I want to say, Matt, thank you for the overall presentation. I think this really helps provide a wonderful opportunity to provide an update to the community on what the plans are. And so I know it's something that has been certainly, you've had conversations from one of my peer board members quite a bit on this, but this was, this is really, really helpful, so thank you. On the, let's see. From path, on the pathways plan, would we provide, how would that work for students to get over from, would we provide transportation, or what's the, how would that work?
Yes, we would provide transportation. We provide transportation now for students who are going over to TCD. So we're looking at a similar model where the students would come and spend half their day. So we would sort of transport on a schedule.
And does our staff, would our staff have to take, or are there any requirements for certification from COD or Wabonzi that the staff that's teaching, or would it be COD on the career pathways? Who would be helping to do the, providing the instruction?
That is a great question. We will definitely have a partnership with TCD regarding the health sciences, is what we're thinking about right now. We currently have staff who are capable of the construction courses that are working, but with any CTE course, there are specific certifications that our staff members need that they would get, whether they were at the Burkett Center or at the home school.
Any, do we see those with, I think it's great with the entrances, the separate entrances for Gail McKenzie and separate entrances for STEPS, and really keeping that delineation really strong. I think that's really important, because I know that they like to, I mean, they are, they're, they're not in high school or anything. So that's so important to have that, have them very, very separated and to provide those updated type of opportunities mirroring professional type of levels and settings versus the school setting. So thank you, I think that was excellent from that viewpoint and that planning. I did have a question. There was, we mentioned two things. On the Gail McKenzie, are there any concerns regarding PE on the second floor, or do we see that working fine?
Yeah, we probably didn't clarify that we would save the, there is, I think you could see it there, Gail McKenzie gym up on the top right. So there would be, they would have access to that gym, and that would be used for PE. And they would, the Gail McKenzie program also would maintain access to the cafeteria as well.
Okay, so they would come down to tap, okay, all right. Thank you. K through eight students, can you help clarify? I just probably don't, everybody else may get, I just, I needed clarification on that.
That's their SAM lab.
Oh, okay. And so will that be, and will they come over there, will that be accessible when?
Consider, yes. Just answer it fast.
The intention is for that to be like a field trip-type experience.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. That helps me a lot. I appreciate that explanation.
Well, you say it in five, and you can say it in one.
Nine thirty, we're all getting snappy. All right, is that it? Okay, Ms. Guns.
I don't have any questions, luckily. Ms. Dumbing actually did address the one that I had. So, but I do want to say I'm so excited. Obviously, the pathways program, I think, is amazing, and I know I say this at a lot of presentations, but any way that we can have students doing what they love specifically, I'm all for, you know, engaging them. And I understand this is all still in the works, you know, how all of that is going to work, but I'm personally very excited about everything you guys are doing over at Burkett.
Mr. Carubus.
Slide 104, kind of the end. On the communication with the Board of Education, with the Board of Education on updates, I would like to provide you, administration, with some direction, and we can see what the other board members want on consensus. But I would like to see updates on how much we've spent on a regular basis. We're spending large amounts of money. And I know we approve the bill this on a regular basis, but that's a, doesn't put it all together. So you see that we've put, we've paid for, you know, a chiller or something, but, or concrete work, but that doesn't tie it to a project or the referendum. So I'd like to see a report as part of the updates include how much we've spent on a regular basis. Maybe that could be a percentage, where we have, you know, the total that we have, you know, issued in bonds, and what percentage we've spent of that bond. I'd like to see, you know, how we're progressing on each of these projects, and however administration, you know, wants to determine that. I don't know what is the appropriate way, because it's hard to say, are you 20% through a project? But, you know, I've completed the build-out of X, Y, and Z. So it'd be nice to see, you know, regular updates on some of these projects. And then I think we do need to break it down a little bit on some of these different projects. We had the master list, which broke it down by certain projects. And then earlier in the slide presentation, you broke it down by schools. So there might be a way to say, well, we budgeted X amount of dollars for Wabonzi, or X amount of dollars for the lighting across the district, and we have spent X amount to date. I think that would be a high-level report that would inform the board on, you know, how we're progressing. You know, do we need that in a board agenda item? Probably not. Could be part of our regular updates or just a general report. So that's something I'd like to see. And then I would also like to see us get more aggressive with the communication. We did such a great job with the referendum, and we were communicating on multiple fronts, news media, Twitter, you know, flyers, mailers. And there's a lot of work here that the community's not going to see. You know, this, not all's done on 95th Street or Eola. So I think we need to figure out a way to get more aggressive with the communication. I think our website can use a lot more dynamic updating that I think would better inform. We could, we could do it with, you know, press releases or whatnot, so. I don't think it's something you can over-communicate on, especially when you're asked the community to spend this money for certain projects. And I would like to see us, going back and informing the community about what we're doing. We have the information. So I'd like to see more communication, and I welcome any other board member's opinion on providing direction with those two items.
I think, Mr. Carubus, if you have some specific suggestions, that we can hand that out to the board members to see if we are in agreement that we would like to see that. You know, I think you have a lot of ideas, and so let's share some of them and see. I mean, I also don't, I realize that some of this is a very dynamic process, so it's like I don't want to say, like, we spent this much on lighting and it was, our budget was this, because now maybe it moved on to something else that was over or under, and so it's, there is some fluctuation that has to be understood here, and, but maybe, you know, bi-monthly, quarterly type of report is something that would be helpful.
I think from administration's perspective, we share the goal of communicating and being transparent with our community. I think over the last six months, since the referendum passed, I think there, you know, we were conscious about not starting any work until we knew we had the fund secured. And so we have been sort of kind of, kind of working nonstop, but doing a lot of work that's not, doesn't generate a lot of photo ops, right? So it's been a little challenging to find opportunities to, you know, snap a photo when, you know, it's a bunch of architects and engineers in a conference room. I think the fun stuff's coming up over the next 12 to 18 months, and I think there'll be no shortage of opportunities to celebrate with our community. and I think there'll be no shortage of opportunities to, to celebrate with our community. I think tomorrow, tomorrow morning, as, now that we've sort of put this out public, we will be uploading all this information that Safer Stronger 204 website. Included with that will be high-level project narratives and descriptions and budgets, as well some of the photos we've, we've taken so far and some of the renderings of, of some of the before and after shots. And we do expect by the end of the month to have, I could, an interactive dashboard feature as part of that too, that will update the community on, on again, how we're progressing from a timeline and budget perspective with the, with the goals we laid out this evening. But, but overall, I think we, we share the goal. I do think that the point about comparing some of our work pre-referendum with, with Twitter and, and other media sources, I think is something we maybe haven't talked about that we should, should re-investigate because I, I do think there's a reality that we didn't exactly draw the biggest crowd tonight, especially after Jason's fan club left. So there is a need to maybe explore other avenues than just through the district website and through, through Board actions. So that is, that piece is definitely taken as well. And then I think the final piece, I think it would be reasonable to add a, to add something that's construction-specific to the, the regular cadence of financial updates, whether that be the monthly treasure and budget reports or, or something along those lines too. So we'll look into that.
Okay, Ms. Jane.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the response to the communication. I, I know you, it, there's so much work. We're looking at 104 slide deck, which is a summary and synthesis at the highest level of the kind of work you guys are doing. So we really, I, I really appreciate the work you're doing and what you were able to present today. I had a few questions regarding this last section. I really, again, once again, I guess if there's a theme that I could take away from today's presentation is on a macro level and a micro level, the, the thoughtfulness of how we're using our space and our resources to, to meet the needs of our students, our staff, while also staying within our budget. And, and that seems to be consistent and very creative and collaborative process, which again, is very much reflected in what was presented here. Just, first of all, I'm so excited to see what this building, I, I really wasn't sure how we were, what we were going to do with this building. I know there were a lot of ideas, but I, I really like how we've compartmentalized the use of this space in a way that serves our district needs, right? Like, this building, I, I feel like can't be replicated anywhere else, right? This is specific to 204 and what we need at this moment, right? And so I really appreciate that. I love the idea of a welcome center. And that, and that it's not necessarily in this building, right? That it's, it's housed somewhere else. I'm curious, would we have full-time staff there? Or do we have any ideas on what, what that space would be? I mean, aside from what the title is, like, what it, what would, what would we do there?
Well, right now, the plan is to house Dr. Sagara's team there.
Oh, okay.
So the EL staff would be there and able to meet with families as a unit. Right now, when families come into our district, especially families with learning needs, not learning needs, but language needs, right? They go to each individual school, which means each individual school is kind of giving them that orientation to the district. And then there are language barriers. So this way, that family gets to come as a unit there and it can do the assessments at that time, get a folder started with them at that time and give them, get them acclimated to the, the district and then assign them to their buildings, is the idea.
Great idea, love it, I love that so much. And I, and I also love the utilization of the rest of the space for our pathway programs. I'm just curious, and I, and I should have asked this question before, but how many of our students are enrolled in these, in the, in the pathways from our three schools?
I'm going to bring Brian up for that one.
Estimate, just curious.
We have about 120 students that go to TCD on an annual basis and then three toward those pathways, but it will vary. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head for culinary construction.
Okay. And do we see that increasing because of perhaps the options we might be able to offer?
Our TCD enrollment has doubled over the past five years. And then enrollment in sports and indoor halls has doubled as well.
Great. And then the last question I had, I, I don't remember. Is there a vestibule for, near the Welcome Center entrance?
Yes, there is. You probably don't remember because we didn't specify, but there will be a secure vestibule piece over by the Welcome Center. That's your, the existing Burkett entrance right now for freshmen? That would be that secure piece that would be created over there.
Okay, that's it, thank you so much.
Ms. Fazdik.
All right, I like that there are so many opportunities with this space. And it seems like we're making good use of it. I do have a question. Is there consideration or plans on the table to either redesign or repurpose that parking or drop-off area in the front of the Burkett Center? I'm thinking about the fact that STEPS students are in and out of the building throughout the day for community trips and such. And if we have people coming to the Welcome Center beyond or buses for field trips beyond, they're driving past that entrance with buses or cars to go around to the parking lot rather than where STEPS students are coming in and out. So I'm just curious if there's been thought given to how that use may, may or may not need to be modified to make sure that that's easy? And that STEPS students come in a variety of different vehicles to school? And is there space for them to do what they need to do in that space? Whereas, you know, right now, at, obviously, at the corporate space where they're currently renting space, there's a big area, almost like what would be in the back of Burkett with, with a wide, you know, pavement area for, for buses and unloading and making sure students are where they need to be. And right now, in the front of Burkett, there's just those two lanes. So I was curious what kind of thought was given to that? Or if there's not, if there's been thought yet or if there are plans for that?
So we've had high-level discussions, you know, part of the, the work to get the city on board with our plans is to, is to meet with them and, and talk through it. And, you know, one thing I've learned being, being in those meetings on the other side is that the city is very concerned with parking for any type of development. So at a high level, we've, we've done the analysis and are, are comfortable that we have the appropriate number of spots and, and that the revised use of both the Burkett and the main campus are, are supported with the current parking, parking lot configurations. As far as specific, you know, specifics after that, I think, I, I think we're, that's still a little bit of work in progress.
Okay, thanks. That was my only real question.
Mr. Rising.
On slide 85, you had identified the square footage. I'm assuming you did that for a reason. Is that pretty comparable to the square footage that Gail McKenzie and STEPS have currently? Or is it a little underneath? But I'm assuming you put that for, there for a reason.
Yeah, that was in comparison to the, to make sure that we accounted for enough square footage and right sizing the space for their current needs. Not only current, but future needs. So there's actually space to grow in both programs as far as square footage is concerned.
Yeah, my only concern, and these are just comments, to ensure we keep the STEPS students and Gail McKenzie students separated as best as possible. I'd also like them to have some pride in, in their programs. So any way we can make that happen would be great as well. Because they have two unique spaces now, right? So giving them still that pride of their own space in naming, right? STEPS could be on the front, Gail McKenzie on the side, I don't know, however it looks. I noticed on slide 94, when you had kind of more of the details of the Gail McKenzie space, I'm assuming that X is, means that it won't look down below? Or it will still look down below? Because down below now in STEPS is going to be the vocational area, the yoga and PE and the dining. So I'm assuming that's going to be blocked off?
So you cannot see down that space? All that represents is architecturally saying that's a two-story volumes of space over there, but you won't have visual access down there.
Okay, perfect. And then my only other comment, question, concern is to ensure that, you know, because I know that Gail McKenzie students do use the PE area, that it's coordinated well, that there's not other programs going on. And whether it's, you know, vocational or STEM or what have you, that that's coordinated well. And then I know in the past, Gail McKenzie has had sports programs, so I'm sure you will figure that out at some point of how that's going to look as well. So just two things I wanted to put on your radar. Going back to Mr. Carubus's comments, actually, I had talked to White and Company and JR before the meeting tonight. I kind of went over there and talked to them briefly. I would like to see updates as well. Listen, we've got some very smart people in this room that are monitoring these things and it has nothing to do with trust. But it does have to do with oversight that the board should have, you know. And so I would like to see updates on projects. I would like to see when any adjustments are made, change orders that are major. You know, the, the, again, I trust White, I trust the project managers, but I would like an update as a board member to have oversight of that information because, and I don't need to, to President Donahue's point, I don't need to, I don't care if we had, if there's a change in lighting. That's not what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about, we said a vestibule is going to cost this much. We're doing 11 of them this summer. I want to know where we came in. Like, how, what was the variance, plus or minus? You know, I mean, just to give us an idea or purview, because if it comes way in over or way in under, I want to understand why. And again, it's not me micromanaging, but it's just transparency and it has nothing to do with a trust issue as a board member as well. But we just need oversight as a board. So I, I would equally as appreciate that and I'm sure Mr. Carubus will get back to us with some ideas. So, thanks.
Thank you for another thoughtful presentation. I have a question on 95. So you have the Gail McKenzie gym and then there's another main gym. What is that for?
Right now, it's just an open gym space. We wanted to designate the Gail McKenzie gym specifically because we wanted it on that side of the building. Because those students will also have access to the CTE spaces. So we see some sharing going on there, just so that you could see that they weren't using the gym on the other side. But we don't have a dedicated program to that gym as of yet. There will still be some after-school use of that gym by some of the Niqua students. But outside of that, unless...
Yeah, I'd still expect then the Burkett campus to get, get significant after-school activity. Again, not just supporting the Niqua campus, but really supporting some other district-wide programs. And so, and even, even with the Park District being on that campus as, as well, I think there's really some good opportunities there. Again, for really both those gyms and, and even the cafeteria space to, to see increased use for, for district-wide or community-wide programmings.
And then the lineup with the STEPS lease, when, when does that lease expire?
So this, this does line up, this, this timeline is, does line up with that STEPS lease expiring. So that lease does expire in July of 2027. So the move for the '27, '28 year is kind of a hard deadline based on the current lease. And that did play, you know, really, that, that was a main consideration in a lot of the timelines you saw this evening, really for not just Burkett, but also for the main campus at Niqua. And really, in some ways, even some of the other projects we, we structured around the district as well. Because that, you know, that this, this lease and that this piece is obviously a priority.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carubus, if you give us your thoughts or whatever and we'll, we'll discuss it or everybody can evaluate it. And I think that there's a general feeling that we would like more information. And I know this has come up a couple times, so it's like, we need to be more specific about ideas of what we want, so.
I think, let's let administration have an opportunity to, to see what they want to provide. I think I've given my direction. I don't think, I think they have a better idea on what the information is. So I'm going to wait and see what administration can propose. So I heard great things from what Matt was thinking.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that, because it seems like we've been talking past each other a couple times. So it's like, I want to get this settled and make sure the whole board is aligned with, yeah, this is what I need and this is sufficient to, you know...
Yeah, I, I personally, I feel comfortable with the, the, the direction and, and we have from the board at this time. I'd, I'd just ask over the next couple of days, if you get a chance to check out what we do, put out there through the Safer Stronger website and, you know, maybe give some initial feedback if we're on the right path. And then I would think by the end of the month, as we, we have an opportunity to digest some of the other comments, I think we can address any of the concerns.
All right, well, thank you. This has been an exciting night and the fulfillment so far of the next, you know, understanding of where, where all that $420 million referendum that so many of our communities supported. So thank you so much for all the hard work and boy, we look forward to seeing these actions take place. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any, I'll let just say of advocacy and Board of Education update? No, okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.